Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It is 3:00 on Wednesday, September 8th. Time for the regularly scheduled City Commission Meeting of the City of Tallahassee. It's great to see everybody. We have come back off of recess. This is our first meeting. We do have a full agenda and a public hearing tonight at 5:00 to discuss the budget. Thank you for joining us. First and foremost, I would like to introduce and invite Pastor David McNeely of Wildwood Church to please come join us for the invocation. And if everyone would please stand. Pastor, thank you so much.
Yeah, and just, I see lots of firemen, law enforcement officers, others here. Just, I mean this from the bottom of my heart. I've got two brothers that are firemen, and thank you for the ways in which you serve us. And I just want you to know, we do indeed pray for you. So, thanks for all that you guys do. We are grateful for you. Let's pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather again here today. You have told us in the Scriptures, "If we lack wisdom, we should ask of you, and you will give it to us liberally without finding fault." So, would you pour out your wisdom upon us? Now, Lord, thank you for all the ways that you have gifted men and women in this room, and I pray that you would continue to use them to serve our great city. So, help us to accomplish your will. We thank you, and again, ask for your guidance. We pray all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight are representatives of the Omega Lamp Lighters. If you'll come down, gentlemen, to the podium. The Omega Lamp Lighters is an incredible organization sponsored by Omega Phi Psi Fraternity. Royal King is here, a good friend from the county. It's good to see you as well. Gentlemen, we're very proud of you. Keep up the great work you're doing in this community. When you're ready, if you'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We had the Lamp Lighters here earlier, honoring them for an event that they had back at Father's Day, which was an amazing cycle ride that they put on, encouraging dads and sons and aunts and uncles and grandparents and godparents to come out. It was a huge success. So, glad to see them out there. Glad to see them here this evening. Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications?
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any agenda modifications.
Okay. Diane, I'll ask you what the last... We have a very busy day today. We have four proclamations that it is my honor to present today. The first proclamation recognizes Fire Prevention Week. I believe I saw Captain Robert Clary here and all the members of the Fire Department. If you'll please come forward. Captain, it goes without saying, and I will, after the presentation, allow you to have a few comments as well. We certainly appreciate everything that TFD does, everything that you continue to do. Y'all do an amazing job. Not only are we in a global pandemic, but we're in hurricane season on top of just From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas the City of Tallahassee is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Tallahassee, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,770 people in the United States in 2019, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 339,500 home fires, and whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can, alerting you to danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sound of alarms and knows how to respond, and whereas residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas residents will make sure their smoke and CO alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory or physical disabilities, and whereas the Tallahassee Fire Department is dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas residents are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2021 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety Effectively Serves to Remind Us It Is Important to Learn the Different Sounds of Smoke and Carbon Monoxide Alarms." Now therefore, I, John Daly, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize October 3rd through October 9th, 2021, as Fire Prevention Week in the City of Tallahassee, and urge all residents to learn the sounds of fire safety for Fire Prevention Week 2021, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Tallahassee Fire Department and emergency services. I read this in witness of each and every one of you with my signature dated today, September 8th, 2021. Look at this, Captain, I forgot to cross my T. How about that right there? Anyway, it's my honor and privilege to be able to present this to you on behalf of the Tallahassee Fire Department. Thank you.
On behalf of Fire Chief Jerome Gaines and the Tallahassee Fire Department, we want to thank you, Mayor, for the reading of the proclamation. We also want to encourage all the citizens to learn the sounds of fire safety, practice fire safety at your home, be proactive. For educational tips, you can join us on our Facebook page, which we will have tips throughout the year, but especially during this Fire Prevention Week. We have a wonderful drive-through touch-a-truck event that's going to be at the Governor's Square Mall parking lot from 12:00 to 2:00 on October 3rd. We ask that you come out and join. Thank you.
Excellent. Appreciate it. Thank you, each and every one of y'all for coming out. Look, let me say once again, we have got the best fire department in the nation right here, if not in the world. Let me remind you. Thanks, Diane. You know, not only do you fight on a day-to-day basis to keep us safe, but let's also remember that during the global pandemic, y'all have truly stepped up to the challenge, helping the medical community and the health community with giving vaccinations, helping with logistics and everything else that goes into it. And I just want you to know truly how much we really appreciate everything that y'all do. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it. Absolutely.
And Mayor, Mr. Mayor, we should note that Fire Chief is a little under the weather, isn't he? And nobody's talking about it, but think he's on a scooter, right?
Mr. Mayor, the Fire Chief is listening. He's on WebEx. He'll present later, but he had a little event.
A little event.
But he's gonna be okay, and he can't keep him down. He's on WebEx today.
I guess we're just gonna leave it at a little event.
Just a little one.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
All righty, sounds good. I would like to ask Mr. Michael McKeo of the Oxford Houses of Tallahassee to please come join me. Michael, it's good to see you. From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, whereas prevention of mental and substance use disorders, work, treatment is effective, and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and substance use disorders is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery and support service, and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, and the Oxford Houses of Florida invite all residents of Tallahassee to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore, I, John Daly, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize September as National Recovery Month. Read in witness of each and every one of you here, signed with my signature dated today, September 8th, 2021. Michael, thank you so much for coming out today and accepting this proclamation. I'm honored to present to you on behalf of the City of Tallahassee. Michael, your firm is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioners. Myself, as a person in long-term recovery, I think this is an awesome moment for the city, and I want to thank y'all. There's over a million people in recovery in the state of Florida, but there's many more that are lacking that. And with the help of Floridians in recovery, Leon County is establishing a recovery community organization. September 25th, we will have a symposium. It will be done virtually. If anybody'd like more information on that, you can search it on Facebook and hit the links to attend that, where we'll be bringing together all different community resources and people that want to help people in recovery. So far, with the Oxford Houses in Florida, who I'm an employee of, the project since March of 2019 has been going very well. We have dozens of people in long-term recovery now, and we have eight Oxford Houses in the city of Tallahassee with tremendous success. Again, if you'd like any more information on that, please feel free to get with me. Thank y'all.
Thank you. I would love to ask Monique Van Pelt of Second Harvest of the Big Bend, and I believe you have other representatives of your team, whoever would like to come join us, that would be great. And Monique, after I present the proclamation, I'm gonna ask you to introduce your team and provide a few comments as well. We can get someone else to take the photos if you'd like to come join us as well. It's quite all right. Come on up. Come on up. We've got our photographer here as well. Sneak on over just a little bit. From the governing body of the City of Tallahassee, a proclamation. And before I start, let me thank you. Second Harvest does an absolutely tremendous job, not only in Tallahassee, Leon County, but in the Big Bend area that y'all cover, especially during these absolutely incredible times. Y'all have really stepped up to the plate. We appreciate it. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in the Big Bend, where 150,000 people face hunger, and one in every three children did not know where their next meal will come from, and whereas Tallahassee, Florida is committed to taking steps to combat hunger in every part of our community and to provide additional resources to those in Tallahassee in need, and whereas Tallahassee is committed to working with Second Harvest of the Big Bend, a member of the Feeding America Nationwide Network of Food Banks, and educating people about the role and importance of food banks, and addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas more than 3.1 million individuals in Florida rely on food provided by the members of Feeding Florida annually, and whereas the coronavirus pandemic has had a devastating health and economic impact across the country, and it is projected that 52,000 more people could face hunger in the Big Bend in the wake of the pandemic this year, and whereas the members of Feeding Florida distributed more than 336 million meals to Floridians in 2020 through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations, and whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to engage the public in action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations to ensure nobody has to make an impossible choice between food and other necessities like medicine, utilities, or childcare. And whereas food banks across the country, including the members of the Feeding Florida, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and help end hunger in the local community. Now therefore, I, John Daly, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do hereby recognize September as Hunger Action Month in the City of Tallahassee, and call this observance to attention to our citizens. In witness of each and every one of you today, I have recited this proclamation, signed by me, dated September 8th, 2021. Please accept this proclamation on behalf of the City of Tallahassee. Monique, thank you all. Ladies and gentlemen.
Good afternoon. My name's Monique Van Pelt. I'm the CEO at Second Harvest of the Big Bend. I was really excited to be able to come today, and we talked about how many of our staff members were gonna be here, and we'd all line up. But when the time came, our drivers were in their trucks, our warehouse workers were moving food, our programs department was completely deployed out to burger agencies, and so there were three of us that could leave the warehouse today to be here. So, I'd like to introduce Sherri Hubbard. She's the Director of Communications with Second Harvest. Jasmine Vickers, she oversees all of our events and does donor coordination. Hunger Action Month, the reason for this month is just so that we could take time to pause, talk about the data, talk about who's being impacted, why hunger exists in our community. And today to be here, we just want to thank you, Mayor, to all of our elected officials, and really to the community. We would not have been able to have the robust response that we had this past year moving 15 million pounds if it wasn't for donors that are here in our community, volunteers that were out at our warehouse, and the support of our elected officials. So, thank you all so much for making hunger central to the work that's been done locally. Our success is your success.
For our final presentation of a proclamation today, I'm gonna ask my colleague and good friend, Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox, to please come present. It was her idea to bring this before the City Commission today. Commissioner Williams-Cox, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to ask my good friends, Ryan Terrell and the Honorable Former Councilman of Havre Hill, Daniel Saul, to come, because it was really their idea. We just make it look good. These are old friends of mine, and I'm glad to partner with you on this. A proclamation from the governing body of the City of Tallahassee. Whereas municipal government is the government closest to the people and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents, and whereas municipal government provides services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, making their city their home, and whereas municipal government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities, including direct participation in the democratic process, and whereas municipal government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along the understanding of the services provided by their municipalities and their benefits, and whereas representative government is dependent on the exercise of the privileges and responsibilities of its citizens, and whereas civic and political participation remains the medium in which citizens engage in free, diverse, and positive political dialogue that guides our nation toward common interests, consensus, and good governance, and whereas it is the public interest for our nation's leaders to foster civic discourse, education, and participation in federal, state, and local affairs, and whereas the advent of revolutionary internet technology offers new mechanisms for empowering our citizens and fostering greater civic engagement than at any time in our history, and whereas the use of new technologies can bring people together in civic forums, educate citizens on their roles and responsibilities, and promote citizen participation in the political process through volunteerism, voting, and the elevation of diverse voices in public discourse, and whereas Florida Civics Week is a very important time to recognize the significant role played by municipal government in our lives and to spread the word to all Floridians that they can shape and influence this level of government. Now therefore, I, Johnny Daly, by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Tallahassee, do recognize September 13th through September 17th as Florida Civics Week, and it is signed by our mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you so much, of course, Mayor Pro... I'm not Mayor Pro Tem anymore. Mayor Pro Tem, Jeremy Mattelau, good to see you, sir. And thank you to my colleagues on the dais. Heart of what I want to just impart to you is, this really is a government by the people, for the people, of the people. And I know you all know that. Two years ago, I lost my reelection to the City Council by one vote. I know you all remember that, those that know me. And so, this is not about a lost election, but it certainly is about the process that we afford the people by this constitution to be engaged in. And so, September 17th is the date that the U.S. Constitution was ratified, and so that is why Florida Civics Week was chosen to be the week of the 17th. So, two years ago, when I set out on a journey to build the foundation for a statewide organization focused on increasing civic participation through civic education, I knew that the government's closest to the people would organically become FCE's unofficial partners in this process, and subsequently our allies, to achieve our mutual goals. What I did not know is how meaningful the launch of Florida Civics Week meant to so many of you on the dais. I find it fitting, as I'm sure you will too, that Florida's capital city, the City of Tallahassee, is officially the first Florida government to recognize Florida Civics Week this year, and it's in all of its inaugural glory. Thank you to the City of Tallahassee for leading on your commitment to educating Florida citizens on the civic process through this recognition. Following the City of Tallahassee are 13 other local governments, including three county commissioners across the state, who are participating in this inaugural event. I'd like to thank Ryan Terrell, FCE's Community Engagement Coordinator, for his work on making Florida Civics Week so successful. I'd also like to thank my dear friend, Commissioner Williams-Cox, for sponsoring this effort with the City of Tallahassee, and Mayor Daly for your willingness to highlight the importance of being engaged in the civic process inside the chamber and outside of it. Next year, we'll be rolling out programming for you to work on with your communities. We look forward to continued discussions in that partnership, and with that, we say thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman, welcome to our chambers.
Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson.
I, first of all, want to say how happy I am that we are the inaugural municipality taking this action today. Civics education, in order for us to have a thriving democracy, democratic form of government, has to happen among our people in order to get them to participate. One of the things that I'm extremely proud of during my time as a member of the Florida House of Representatives, I passed legislation that required civics education in public schools throughout the state of Florida, recognizing that if we are gonna have an effective democratic form of government, we've gotta have our young people educated in that process. I remember when I was in high school, and I'm not gonna tell you how long ago that was, we were required to take civics education then, and so we felt it important during that time to ensure that our young people get educated about civics and civic involvement, because in order for us to continue to be one of the beacons of light in terms of our democratic form of government, our children had to be educated. And so, again, I'm proud that during my time in the legislature, I was able to sponsor and get past that bill that requires now civic education in public schools throughout the state. So, this is an excellent follow-up to that as well, and we look forward to being a participant in educating our entire community in that regard. So, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, let's move on. Do we have any announcements before the body today, Mr. Manager?
No, sir, we do not.
Do we have any appearances by other appointed boards, committees, or other governments?
No, sir.
All right, we are on system input on agenda items. Mr. Clerk, will you walk us through how we're gonna handle tonight?
Yes, sir, Mayor. We will take speakers tonight at the time of each item. When we get to each of those items, we will hear from speakers who are here in chambers first, and then we will hear from those who are connected virtually. We do only have a single person connected virtually, so almost all of our speakers are here in person tonight or this afternoon. Citizens who wish to speak at the public hearing, we will hear from those individuals at 5:00 a.m. at that publicly noticed time, and then we do have un-adjented speakers. As we always do, we will take those at the end of the meeting. Yes, 5:00 p.m.
You'll be here at 5:00 a.m., but we won't.
Yeah, it's not that long a meeting tonight.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, we're on the consent agenda. Mr. Manager, have any items been pulled off consent?
No, sir.
All right, is there a motion for consent?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five-zero. We are on item number 11.01, Audit Committee Appointments. Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, on this item, the Audit Committee currently has a vacant seat and is recommending... Jenna Rose Hunter is recommended to fill that seat for a term that will run through June of 2024.
Do we have any comments on this item?
We have... We do have one speaker on this item, Mayor. That is Stanley Sims, and he's the only speaker that we have on this item.
Mr. Sims, thank you for joining us. Three minutes, please, and I think you know our green, yellow, red system.
My name is Stanley Sims. I own a small minority business out of 603 Martin Luther King Boulevard. I want to say that I am very happy that the IG's office is auditing the committee. As I brought to the attention of the Assistant City Manager yesterday, I don't like... It doesn't look right when a member of a committee proposes legislation or recommendations for proposals, scores proposals, submit applications for funding where she sits... I'm sorry, where they sit on these boards and receive the money. I pull public records requests, looked at scoring, it's not objected. So, I'm not... I'm not saying nothing. We're making progress, but we gotta go deeper. This is not upon the reflection of the person on this, but this is an opportunity for me to highlight. Things will not go on like I heard in that trial. A knee on our neck is a knee on our neck, and I don't care if it's blue, black, brown, or yellow. Tallahassee is going to move forward. I saw that. I saw one of our top dogs down in Dee's Kitchen, 'cause she knows Shingles is closed, so she go down there to get her wings, 'cause they fried hard. That's Miss Barbara. So, hope is in our reach.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
And I ain't gonna let nobody turn us around.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any other speakers on this item?
No, sir.
All right, is there a motion for us?
Move accepted.
Second.
It's been properly moved for staff recommendation by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. We are on the introduction of ordinance. We are on item number 12.01. Let me just go ahead and state that we will take item 12.02 up after 13.05, and I'm gonna allow the manager and the attorney to explain why we will be doing it that way. But right now, we're on item number 12.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 21-0-29, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending sections 21-66, 21-151, 21-281, and 21-402, the City of Tallahassee Code relating to water and sewer service, including applicable fees, charges, and rates, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. The recommended action is Option 1, Introduce Ordinance Number 21-0-29 that reflects changes to water and wastewater rates, fees, and charges, set the first and only public hearing for September 27, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. in the City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Although the recommended action is simply to formally introduce, which is Option Number 1, first let me ask, is there any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Excellent. I'll look for any action.
Move Option Number 1, as recommended by staff, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, there is a motion on the table. Is there a second to the motion? Second. Seconded. Commissioner Porter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only question was if, for the agenda item for the public hearing in September, or later in September, if we could have the study attached that we refer to? I'd be curious in looking that over.
The rate study?
And for the benefit of the public as well. Thank you.
Sure. Okay, it's been properly moved staff recommendation by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Porter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. We are on, and again, we will come back to item 12.02 right after 13.05. Madam Attorney, do you want to go ahead and comment on why we're doing that?
Certainly. The item number 13.05 actually explains the collective bargaining that occurred and the agreement between the parties, the city and the police union. Because the ordinance introduction actually implements that, we would take that after there has been a substantive vote on the memorandum of agreement.
Excellent. All right, any questions, colleagues? Great, let's move on. 13.01, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, let me invite Abena Ojatayo, our Director of Housing and Community Resilience Forward. She will make a presentation as I introduce this item. You'll recall last December, you approved the creation of a landlord risk mitigation fund. It was somewhat unique and certainly in an attempt to put another tool in the toolbox as relate to housing and homelessness. It was designed to incentivize local landlords to become partners in preventing homelessness and removing barriers to entry in terms of housing that may relate to deposit and credit worthiness. We're pleased to report that we're picking up with your approval a new partner in Leon County. They have elected to join us in this program with a financial contribution that is targeted to the most vulnerable population, or one of the most vulnerable populations, that's those reentering society after incarceration. This item seeks your approval to enter into an agreement with Leon County to accept $100,000 in addition to the fund that was originally funded at $250,000. Abena has been working hand in glove with her counterpart at the county. I'm very pleased with that relationship, and I'm just so pleased to present this to you tonight. I'll ask Abena to add a few words.
Sir, thank you so much, City Manager, and good afternoon, Commissioners. It's good to see you. Feels like it's been forever. Thank you for the opportunity to speak a little bit more about this. The information, of course, is detailed in your agenda packet. But this item specifically advances your strategic priority to have an impact on poverty and to be a leading community partner that connects people with resources so that they can sustain themselves in their households. We are very pleased for, to receive your approval in December, and staff got to work right away to launch this landlord risk mitigation fund. We went live in late January, just a couple of weeks after your approval. And this program is designed initially to target low, current, small landlords in the community. So, any landlord in Leon County is able to apply, and anyone who has property within the city limits is eligible. We designed the program to provide incentives. And so, a landlord that agrees to take on a vulnerable tenant with that new lease gets a $500 bonus. They also have access to file a claim if there should, any issue should come up, including $1,000 to support damages on their property after the lease, as well as $2,000 in lost rent in case their tenant faces a financial crisis in the future. So, essentially, this program is a partnership. It is something that says, we're here with you if you're going to partner with us to provide stability for our housing vulnerable clients. We have enjoyed some really good early support. So far, we've had eighteen landlords that enrolled early on soon as the program launched. That represents about fifty-two units that are in the program. You seeded the program with a fund of $250,000 from the trust fund. And really, what it was, was your leadership and a signal to the community that we need more folks to partner with us. And so, we're very pleased today to say that folks are listening. Early nonprofit support from legal services for mediation, Big Ben continuum of care. The city actually also funds a landlord liaison program that works hand in hand to recruit more and encourage more landlords to participate. And so, today, we have a potential partnership with Leon County, specifically through their Public Safety Coordinating Council. And they saw that this was a very worthwhile program to invest in to help them address their goals of reducing recidivism and making sure that reentry candidates can safely and securely be housed once they come into society. And so, our staff recommendation to you today is to accept the $100,000 contribution and authorize the city manager to enter into the MOU for the details of that program. I'm happy to answer any more questions if you have any.
Director Ojatayo, excellent job. Appreciate it. Do we have any, first of all, Mr. Manager, any final comments?
No, sir.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Let's turn it over to Commissioner Discussion, Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, and then Commissioner Porter.
Let me start by, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start by saying kudos, Ms. Abena Ojatayo. We have become real close friends working on this situation that we have here in our city. And we want to, and we want to thank the county for coming to the party and dancing with us as we try to mitigate this. We were together earlier today on a call, and there was some report out about this program. And I'm hoping that more will take advantage of it. It is great to have additional funding, and so, we need to get, make sure that, for those of you who are listening, just get the word out there that we have some help. So, we get more people applying, because I'm looking at this, and it shows that $10,000 has been dispersed. So, now, we're about to have $340,000. So, let's, you know, let's, we want the public to know that this is available if you need it. So, we want to welcome the city, welcome the county to the party and thank them for their partnership. And with that, I would like to move staff recommendation.
Staff recommendation's been properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Porter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Abena. I just had a few follow-up questions. For the people, do we know how many individuals were covered by the $10,000 that we provided to the landlords? Like, what did that cover exactly?
I'll be happy to provide a specific breakdown. We have landlords that initially requested claims for financial assistance for lost rent. Part of the three incentives, so there's a new lease, and for protecting clients who, or tenants who are demonstrated financial crisis but can still sustain their housing. So, those were the initial claims that we received. A lot of the other claims we got also, we were able to point the landlords to additional resources. We actually have a ton of resources still on rent assistance and utility assistance, and we found that some of the initial claims were really better suited for that. And so, there's been more direction in that way.
Okay, and of the participants in this program, the renters, have any of them been evicted? Or were these funds sort of, are they able to be used to sort of hold someone over? Like you were saying, like, maybe they can only make half of the rent, and they're given, have people been evicted?
So, the program is actually designed for the landlord's participation. So, we don't have any tenants enrolled. The landlords do commit by their enrollment to exhaust all other options before eviction. So, the majority of them have not had any evictions. We've had one, I think, one or two that had evictions that were filed prior to the program being launched. And based on the success of the case with the judge ruling, our assumption is that they did have a legitimate reason beyond what this program would have required them to do.
Okay, and did anyone who was participating drop out of the program, any landlords?
I don't, I don't think we have had any. I think what we had in the early stage were landlords that were looking for direct rent assistance related to COVID. And so, some of them did kind of steer themselves to the county assistance program or the state program. And those that are remaining are those that are still committed to participating. Even if they may not have a vacant unit right now, they're committing to participating in the program.
Okay, and do we have, you know, I know that we, when we first were considering this, we limited who could apply, you know, who could benefit to a certain kind of landlord. Do you feel like, have we had conversations with staff about whether we should expand that or not to include more people?
Yes, so the program currently is limited to landlords that own no more than five properties in the county and within the city limits. We knew early on that that program could expand or that eligibility, but really, it's a function of how much, how much funding is available in the tool. Because ideally, you'd want to be able to respond to any claim, any legitimate claim, and so, you don't want to oversubscribe. But that's the goal. The goal is certainly to grow it. Another consideration is that we knew small landlords were feeling a particular crunch at the height of the pandemic. And some of our bigger landlords really have other resources that they could tap. So, yes, absolutely, in the future, it can. I think it makes sense as the fund grows.
Okay, thank you. And one last question. Do we have any idea for the fifty-two units? And I know that we, because we're not working directly with tenants, we might not have this information. But do we have any idea how many people that includes that are living in those fifty-two units?
We, I won't be able to answer that right now, but we can certainly find out, yes. We can do, what the landlords tell us when they enroll is how many bedrooms are in this unit, and we can make some assumptions about who's there. We don't ask them to load up their tenant leases or anything like that yet. That information really becomes critical at the time when they file a claim.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any further comment? Staff recommendation's been properly moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. Item number 13.02, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me invite Robert Culverhouse, our Real Estate Director Ford.
Hold on, let me interrupt you real quick, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to recuse myself from this vote. I own a business directly across the street from this parcel. I don't have any financial interest in it, but there may be a perceived conflict, so I'm going to abstain.
Excellent.
All right.
Go grab a cup of coffee.
Mayor Pro Tem?
We'll call you back. Mr. Manager, proceed.
Thank you, sir. This item seeks your direction and approval for the sale of a vacant parcel that's owned by the city at 650 West Gaines Street. That parcel was purchased in 2016 for regional stormwater work. It was something we needed to acquire. That work has long since been completed, and the parcel sits there in an idle state. Over the summer, we received an unsolicited offer for the purchase of this property. In accordance with your real estate policy, we're bringing it before you tonight. We make two recommendations. One is to approve the acceptance of the unsolicited offer to sell the city property, and two, to publicly notice it in accordance with your policy for three weeks and bring back a final item on October 13th. I'd like to ask Mr. Culverhouse to provide a little more background for your information and the public's benefit on this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Manager. Commissioner, our mayor, Commissioners. I hope everybody had a great summer break, ready to get back to business. As the mayor, or as the manager indicated, the city has received an unsolicited offer for the, from the 908 group to purchase a vacant one-acre parcel on West Gaines Street. In accordance with the Commissioners, with the Commission's real estate policy, staff seeks your approval to pursue this offer from the 908 group in the amount of $4 million without competitive bid solicitation. Again, as the manager pointed out, the parcel was purchased by the city in 2016 for $1.4 million as part of a project to construct drainage facilities from Madison Street to the regional stormwater pond at Lake Alberta. As a standalone parcel, the city real estate has limited development potential due to its size, its shape, and the utility encumbrances. However, the 908 group is working toward an assembly of parcels for multifamily development. This assemblage allows for a cohesive redevelopment consistent with uses envisioned for the Gaines Street corridor and provides for infill development while increasing the functional utility of the city property. The real estate policy allows for the sale of city real estate without a competitive bid solicitation if the committee, or if the commission determines the sale is in the best interest of the city. This item has been reviewed by the Real Estate Committee, who, along with staff, recommend options one and two, which will allow immediate purchase and sale negotiations with a ready and willing buyer. With your approval today, the potential sale will be properly noticed per policy and brought back to the Commission for final approval. And I'll be happy to answer any further questions you might have.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
Mayor, we do. We have several speakers on the item, including one who will take last, who is connected virtually. The first speaker we have is Ed Murray. And as he approaches, I'll remind speakers, as at all parts of our meetings, three minutes for your remarks, and I'll give you a heads up, and you'll see a yellow light at thirty seconds.
Hi, thank you, Commissioners, Mayor. I'm Ed Murray. My address is 1018 Thomasville Road. I thought I was going to speak behind the 908 guys, but I'm the real estate broker involved in the transaction if it goes through. What I'm going to speak about briefly, Brad's going to cover the details of the project. But I was fortunate to be chairman of the Gaines Street Vitalization Committee from about 2008 to about 2013 or 14. I worked with several of you guys on that. This is exactly what we envisioned to be there. It's the size and scale and exactly what we hoped it would be. It's, you know, five or six stories. It's going to have about 490 people living there. It's going to be an eighteen-hour active, it's going to contribute to an eighteen-hour active neighborhood. There's no CRA money requested, and the average, and we anticipate between $650,000 and $700,000 a year worth of taxable income coming in. So, I ask for your support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next is Brad Wolf, followed by Eric Duda.
Wolf, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Brad Wolf from 908 Group, and my address is 9200 Treasure Lane Northeast in St. Petersburg, Florida. I had a PowerPoint loaded, but I don't necessarily need it. Just the next slide. Okay, well, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for having me. I know I only have three minutes, so I'll kind of fly through this. This is just a generic rendering of some, of what we've built in the surrounding area. It may look pretty similar to this. This is the site that Robert Culverhouse just showed you, right next to the Renaissance, 650 West Gaines Street. This is a current view of the site. It's a dirt parking lot, not being utilized very well. This is from the southeast. This is a view of the same site from the southwest. Again, this is what we would envision the project, looking very similar to our ground floor clubhouse, storefront glass, some units on the ground floor with five floors of student apartments above. And this is just a map of the College Town area. All of the properties in blue are our past projects. The nine at Tallahassee on Jefferson and Woodward, we built, leased up, finished in 2019. State House Varsity, which was that old gas station across the street from Duke Campbell Stadium. We just finished that project up and moved students in a couple of weeks ago, and they're loving it. And then, you see the blue shaded area next to the Civic Center, that's State House Arena. That's the sister property of State House Varsity. That was also opened up a few weeks ago. All three of those, one opened in 2019, two opened a couple of weeks ago, were fully pre-leased eight months before we opened. So, there's just really a ton of pent-up demand in College Town. The other two blue shaded sites are properties we closed two weeks ago, and will start construction on student apartments there, which will open in August of 2023. And then, you see the green site, which is the site we're proposing to acquire. This is just a photo of the nine at Tallahassee. This is a photo of the old gas station, which is now State House Varsity, 228 students living there. This is a photo of State House Arena, the one by the Civic Center that just opened, 376 students living there. This is a photo of the one just north of College Town and Township, which we will start construction here in the next month or so. This is State House 2.2. This is right across the street from the one we'll be starting in a month or so, and those are sister properties. And then, just to finish up, some points on why we think this should move forward. The purchase price of $88 per square foot is significantly above the $35 per square foot market value. We have properties that we're working on tying up to assemble a larger parcel, which will bring the taxable value from 375 annually, which would just be the city property when completed, to 675 annually, which will be the larger development as a whole.
You're right at your three minutes.
All right, one more sentence. We'll be creating 400-plus temporary local construction jobs. We checked with our Culpeper Construction, our G C today, and they said they work with several minority and women, small business enterprises on those, and will create fifteen to twenty permanent jobs. And this is obviously compatible with the Gaines Street vision, like Ed Murray noted, and will help connect downtown to the College Town corridor for the eighteen-hour downtown.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you all.
And just in case, sticking around in case when we get to questions, if anybody has any questions for y'all as the development group. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Eric Duda, and then Todd Sperry.
Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hey, good afternoon. My name's Eric Duda. I reside at 4506 South Trash Street in Tampa, Florida. Brad finished up the presentation here, and we're here for any questions that anybody might have. Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Todd Sperry and then Sammy Dixon.
Mr. Sperry, good to see you, sir. Your name and address for the record, please.
Todd Sperry, 2275 Trescott Drive. You can't see my big smile, but it's happening. You know, for a moment, just suspend the unsolicited offer and let's just talk about the merits of the deal. You know, staff and league have looked at this and said it's a good deal and support it. You know, past commissions have given you the ability to think independently and analyze yourself if the merits of this gives you the ability to approve this today. I've been a general contractor in Tallahassee for 38 years. I have seen more deals than I can count go away since the comp plan by over analysis, bureaucratic process, and just indecision. You know, I think the staff's done a great job outlining the merits of this and the possibilities, but the one thing I want to highlight, this is a 250% over-market offer. And this is a land speculator's dream. And this is a windfall for the citizens of Tallahassee. You know, I ask you, please, support this and don't be caught clinging to a bureaucratic process to the detriment of community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Sammy Dixon.
Mr. Dixon, good to see you. Thank you.
Good to see you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Sammy Dixon, 1471 Timber Lane. I am in full support of this deal. To have a stormwater issue that then you pay 1.4 million and turn it into a $2.6 million windfall, as a banker, I can tell you that's an exceptionally good deal. But more importantly, listening to all of the speakers in the presentations earlier, resolutions, not used to speaking with a mask on. With the resolution, poverty, we're looking at the civics group. Creating good civics education creates strong democracy. With a strong democracy, you got to have a strong economy. And I want to commend this body for what you're doing and moving things forward with Mango, with this project right here. The only way we're going to be able to solve our poverty issues in Leon County as measured by the Chambers Scorecard is creating more jobs, creating more opportunity. And by the way, no one's mentioned, you're putting a piece of property back on the tax rolls that you're not getting anything from. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Brian Sealy and then Donna Cotterell.
Mr. Sealy, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Brian Sealy, 1245 Cedar Center Drive. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Gaines Street property sale. As been mentioned many times, for a property like this, two and a half times the value of the land that you guys purchased it for, it shows the success of the Gaines Street public-private partnership. The CRA is such a great example of how public and the private sector can work together. If I'm not mistaken, I noted here that the original CRA investment was around 30 million over in the Gaines Street College Town area. And since then, the economic investment return has been at half a billion dollars and counting. You know what? I see here a lot of familiar faces, Ed with Talcor. I own Sealy Real Estate Solutions, so I've sat across Ed. Ed probably lost on some bids, working against him. But, you know, I would love to think of a reason why this deal shouldn't go through, but I've looked at this piece of property and it's not worth probably even what you guys paid for it. To be quite honest with you, I would love to try to bid and bring a buyer in, but I know that I couldn't get a better deal. The truth is, is that they have this working here because he was able to put together a group of individuals to make this thing make sense. And I want this to go through because the truth is that every single package that groups like this does, it helps me to advertise more and bring other opportunities to the city and allows me to provide for my family and it allows for other entrepreneurs in the city to grow as well. So I definitely encourage you to go ahead with this offer. By delaying the process, it definitely would do nothing but, you know, honestly hurt the city. Use the fact that they're trying to get this through because they have a time crunch, they want to make this thing work, they got the money lined up, money's cheap. We don't know what the economy's going to do now, so let's make the sale happen now. That's my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Donna Cotterell. And then Stanley Sims will be the last speaker we have in person.
Good, well, thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you for having me. Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager, at all. My name is Donna Pearl Cotterell and I live in Tallahassee, Florida. And I want to say thank you for allowing public comments on this. And I really, in the beginning, initially when I heard about this, thought it was a great idea, thought, you know, great windfall for the city, good opportunity for, you know, city funds. However, in light of the recent trial where elected officials and developers got into some trouble, I think maybe we might want to pump the brakes as a city and ask ourselves, why? Why a no-bid contract? If this land is really, you know, valued as high as they want to pay for it, let some other folks compete. And if they're the only ones that want it at that rate, great. At least we've given it an ethical chance to look at other bidders versus jumping in with both feet. We get the windfall, but I'm just going to say, in terms of the ethics of that and how that looks as, to me, as a citizen of the city, I would prefer to have it out to bid. And if they win the contract, great. But I would ask also, is there any harm to the city in going out to bid? If there is, maybe you all could share that with us so that we would know and have a better understanding as to why no, no-bid contract? And then I know some people don't like bureaucratic red tape. Someone just mentioned that. None of us do. But again, why the rush? So I ask you all to please pause, pump the brakes, ask all the right questions before you proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sims. Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Stanley Sims. My wife still lets me live at 1320 Avondale Way. She wants me to go home, but this is important. Mr. Banker, this is an awesome deal, but it's fruit of the poison tree. I heard your name so much, Mr. Ed Murray, down at the federal courthouse. I'm glad to meet you. This gentleman said he would have loved to bid on it. Land don't disappear. The banker ain't going nowhere. They can enter into a partnership with the banker to lock the radio in right there, if they get it. Are we not going to acknowledge what happened? Are we just going to keep going business as usual with our head in the sand? Are you not going to acknowledge what has happened? These gentlemen, thank you for wanting to invest in Tallahassee. This is not against you. This is about process. If it was my money, I guarantee you, because I like it, but it ain't my money. Even my money ain't my money because I have to check with my wife. There is a process. And I see privilege. I don't see process. In that case, can I get my 1.45? Because I need it. It took me seven years. Equity. Let's not make Tallahassee think that you all didn't hear the judge. Because tomorrow morning, I got to go back down there to see what happened. We need leadership from you guys to show us that a brighter day is on the horizon. And I'm just waiting for it.
You're at 30 seconds.
I'm waiting. And I'm not waiting alone. How many more Tallahasseans are waiting to see how you're going to respond to this verdict? This is going to let us know.
Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, we have one additional speaker and that is Brian Lupiani. He should be on, on your screen.
All right. Mr. Lupiani, are you with us?
I hope I am. I'm not, Brian Lupiani. I'm at 607 McDaniel Street inside the city limits. I'm not necessarily opposed to this sale, but I'm concerned about what seems to be, getting to be a habit of financial transactions coming up on one, in one direction or the other, coming up to the city commission with hardly any notice to the public and staff recommendations to ignore or bypass certain city policies. And to the gentleman who complained about bureaucracy, sure, everybody doesn't like it, but competitive bidding is not bureaucracy and getting more than one estimate is not bureaucracy. That's being the good stewards of the city's money. Again, I don't, I don't know what the story is on this. It's probably, you know, it may turn out to be great. I don't have anything in particular against this transaction, but I wish you would consider putting it out for bids and as the young lady mentioned a few minutes ago, what exactly is the problem with doing that? And if you're not going to do that, and if we're going to keep getting these things coming up with recommendations to just skip over the competitive bidding policies, then I suggest you just repeal that policy if you're just going to keep ignoring it anyway. Thank you. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, any other comments?
Not on this item.
All right, let's open it up for discussion. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, my question is to our, our city attorney, Madam Attorney, is there anything wrong with what we have been presented? Anything illegal about what we've been presented?
As you may or may not be aware, the city policy 136 does permit either the city manager under certain conditions or the city commission under certain conditions if it determines that it is in the best interest of the city to waive the competitive bidding. It is authorized by the policy itself.
And my second question is, is there anything to prevent any other offers to come forward in the three-week period that has been proposed?
No, certainly, as I understand it, there's going to be advertising for three weeks. So certainly if there are other offers, those offers can be presented to this commission.
Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
With that, I'm going to show leadership and I'm going to lead us into accepting these funds for the residents of the city of Tallahassee. And I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Option one and two.
Staff recommendation for option number one and two has been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, Commissioner Richardson, and then Commissioner Porter, you're recognized.
Yeah, the, the other thing that I wanted to mention, you know, at the end of my term on the city commission, I would have done this for 24 years, including my service on the school board, my service in the state legislature, and now my service on the city commission. I resent like hell anybody questioning my ethics, my integrity, my, my involvement in this community. We have, we have nothing.
Commissioner Richardson, can you give me just a second?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask everybody once again, as I always do at all meetings, and I apologize, I did not start the city commission meeting off this way. Let's please all take a deep breath. These are very important issues that we're dealing with and let's work together. We are not going to tolerate a back and forth from the audience to the dais. We're going to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak and speak in a proper manner. I'm asking everybody to join us and help us set the example for everyone that is watching this meeting, including school kids that are trying to learn the democratic process on how it's done right. Commissioner Richardson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. None of us would have considered this item if we didn't think that it was legal. Of course, we've consulted with our attorney. It is based on policy. It is based on what is in the best interest of our community. I support it. The one issue that was not talked about is the fact that this project is within our CRA district. It will produce millions of dollars for development in the Frenchtown South Side Community Development District, where it's populated primarily by, and I live in that, well, I don't know, I'm not sure I'm in the district, but certainly live on the south side of Tallahassee. And we've got areas like the Bond Community, Frenchtown, Providence, and other communities within that CRA development that will benefit from the revenue generated from this project. That's what I support, improving our community, bringing revenue, millions of dollars in tax revenue to our city, to our county, to our school district. That's what I support. And, 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 and we have, we don't have to answer for what someone else did that was here prior to us. We don't have to answer for someone that the legal system has already adjudicated and dealt with that did improper acts while they were here. We don't have to answer for that. We are moving forward as a city and we're going to do what's right for the citizens and taxpayers of this community, of the city of Tallahassee. And this project is in line with what we're trying to accomplish as a city in terms of bringing revenue and private sector development to our city. And so I support, wholeheartedly support this project, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Porter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I think I see where this is going. I have to say, I, I enjoyed meeting with 908 and Mr. Murray earlier today. I, I support this project. I support urban infill. I support College Town. When I was a university student, I lived in College Town. The walkability, the revitalization that we've seen there, I think, is, is consistent with what the Gaines Street, you know, this was before my time, but was working on. And I agree with everything that has been said about the benefits of this project. That being said, you know, I, I do believe there is a process for a reason and not, I understand we are the ultimate authority and there's nothing illegal about moving forward, but I do think it's concerning to me that we see this becoming a habit. I also just generally, and I say this all the time, you know, public land is such a resource and I would have really liked to have the opportunity to think through what else the city itself could have done on that parcel. So, but, but I understand and if we do move forward, which it seems we will, I do think this project will be a, a great addition to that area.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Mr. Mayor, on point. I, I, just because we're not familiar with the process doesn't mean that there's not a process. I've read this, I've asked questions. We are following the process. It's, if it is not, it may be it's that we need a deeper understanding, but what's been black and white, we are following what is in black and white of this process. So perhaps more education on the process is needed. But I, I don't want us to give the, to give the impression, and I know a speaker spoke to this, that we're not following the process. And in that vein, it might be worth for, for public education to speak to what the process is so that we understand that we're not doing anything outside of the process. Whether you like it or not, there is a process that we are following. So, you know, Madam Attorney, I'm, I'm going to call on you again, if you don't mind. You've, you've shared this process, I'm with, I'm sure with each of us. You've shared this process, I'm sure with each of us in our briefings, but for the public consumption, could you speak to why it's here at the commission at this point in time? And also, the three-week period after whatever decision we make here is in place to allow for any other opportunities to bid?
Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. So the policy, the city commission policy 136 speaks to the sale of real estate that is owned by the city. And it sets forth the process to be followed, and it sets forth options that can be followed. So there is a process in the policy involving competitive bidding, but it also provides that if it has been determined to be in the best interest of the city, or, and that means in the public interest, if this commission, this body makes that determination, then you can have a vote whereby you can waive the competitive bidding. So what happens here is they, there is comments that are heard, the commission enters into discussion, and based on that discussion and the information presented, they determine whether or not it is in the best interest of the city or in the public interest to waive the competitive bidding process. After the competitive, they've decided that they're gonna waive that process, there is a three-week period where there will be advertising. So during that three-week period, someone could come forward and actually submit another option for purchase that could certainly be considered by this commission, and then before it finalizes the negotiations in the process. And all of this is laid out in the policy 136.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. I just wanted to be publicly noticed that we are following a process that was put in place before I got here. I had nothing to do with putting it in place. I'm just trying to follow. So I just wanna make sure that the public is aware that we're doing this for the public interest.
Yes.
And anyone who wants to come and buy my home for, you know, two and a half times its value, let's talk. Let's have a conversation. So I'm ready to move forward.
Right, Commissioner Porter.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to say, I'm familiar with the process and the policy. I'm well-educated on it. There are exceptions and options included in that policy. This, to me, does not reach the threshold of pursuing that option. So I just wanna clarify my position. Thank you.
Mr. Manager, you wanted to have-
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I won't belabor this, but I think it is important to point out, you do have a policy that prescribes the path of decision-making. That decision-making rests with you as an elected body. And when we get an unsolicited offer, we're going to bring that offer to you. We may recommend to staff to approve it or not approve it. Professionally, we would do that. But that ultimate decision-making will travel to you as a body in accordance with your policy. But the point I wanted to make is, you may see more of this. This is not a pattern other than the market is really good. People have discovered Tallahassee. We see outside capital coming from out of state and in-state to Tallahassee, and we see a lot of urban infill. And so I would hate to leave this day and think this may not happen again, because I think it will. Because people are looking to Tallahassee, they're assembling properties, they're trying to develop, and they believe, I'll put words in the mouths of the folks from St. Pete, Tallahassee's a good place to invest. So I just wanted to leave that as part of this conversation.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question.
Commissioner Porter.
If I may, thank you. So I see the fiscal impact. It says the proceeds from any sale will be addressed at the time of purchase. Do we, Mr. Manager, do we have ideas for how that money, where that would go? Would it go into our deficiencies fund by default?
What does our policy say in regards to the sale of property, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor. The policy does say that it will go to your deficiencies fund to the extent it is not fully funded. It is not.
Okay.
So if this property closes prior to that occurring, which I suspect it would, it would go to the deficiencies fund in accordance with your policy, your financing of the government policy.
And, Mr. City Manager, could you talk about what that deficiencies fund is and why it's important that it be fully funded?
Yes, sir. Thank you for that question. The deficiencies fund is essentially our reserve account for general government activities. We've relied upon that heavily over the last number of years because of the back-to-back-to-back emergencies we've experienced. And so that's our savings account. We've used it, we've used it well. The credit rating agencies look favorably upon that to make sure that you're well-financed, but you're also well-reserved in the event there's an emergency. It is below target value. It was below target value for many years after the financial downturn in 2008 and 2009, as it should have been, frankly. It was used for the right reasons. It took a number of years to replenish it. I believe it reached, it was full again in around 2017. And of course, since then, we've had a number of emergencies we've had to use it for. So this will be a welcome source of income for that deficiencies fund.
Mr. Clerk, you have comments?
Just one, I do believe that the first portion of the funds will go back to the fund that purchased it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Manager, but I think it was purchased by, the purchase of the property was by utilities fund, and I think they get their money back before the balance goes into deficiencies.
I appreciate that correction. That's correct. We're anticipating a gain on this one.
Excellent. Any further comment? Commissioner Williams-Cox.
And for any future sales that should occur, at the point that the deficiency funds are repleted or completed, then the policy states that those funds will go into affordable housing. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, it depends. Let me answer it that way. Depending upon the nature of the property, if it was designated for affordable housing, it goes into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. If it was not, it flows to your capital fund, so it's a source of capital funding. And again, and you as a commission and former commissions have done a really good job prescribing how those dollars flow. Now, of course, you can make any decision you would like. You could change course of that, but it is a very structured process. If a property is designated, which you do every year, designate a list of properties owned by the city as appropriate for affordable housing, it flows into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. If not, it would flow to capital funding, any capital needs that the government may have.
Thank you.
Excellent. So I first wanna say thank you to the gentlemen. You have done several projects here in Tallahassee. Your company has the great projects. We are College Town. We certainly do appreciate it. We appreciate you bringing this offer before us. A lot of great comments tonight. I wanna thank everybody that did come out to testify. Whatever your position is, or your concerns are, yeah, they're all valid. Let me first start by saying, yeah, our community's been through a very difficult past couple of weeks since we've been on recess with the trial and everything. It weighs heavy on all of our minds, weighs heavy on this community. Yes, I am sure that we will be moving forward and taking additional actions, and we are gonna be responsible, as we have been. And as it was noted, many of these actions happened before any of us were elected to this city commission, and we take great pride in moving this city forward. Back to the item that's before us. Sometimes we get confused with our policy of land that the city collectively decides that we own and we are going to sell. And as the manager appropriately described, we are in a situation where the real estate market is hot, and we do have people that come directly to Tallahassee and say, "You own that piece, I wanna buy it." We might not have considered selling it. That is where we are right now. The motion on the table recommends that we move forward with this process for a formal approval of the sale in three weeks. As it has been noted, if somebody does come before the city commission or comes to the manager or any one of us and says, "I'm very interested in a legitimate offer on that piece of property for an equal amount or more, and would love to have the opportunity to talk to you in a formal manner," as I told the gentleman today at the table, if another offer comes in, of course, we will go to the RFP process and move forward. That's why we are advertising for the next three weeks to see if anybody else is interested in this piece of property. Unfortunately, it is my opinion that I don't think anyone else would be interested in this piece of property because it's an odd shape, and it was originally purchased specifically for stormwater. There is not much that you can do on that piece of property except for park on it right now. And I do appreciate our colleague recusing himself because I do know that parking for his establishment does take place over there. And that was the right decision to make. The gentlemen's before us have acquired other parcels around it. Collectively, they are going to add to the flavor of College Town by developing another student housing complex. It is the appropriate place to put college student housing complex. From an urban design standpoint, it is a perfect redevelopment, development opportunity. They are not asking for a single penny of subsidy from the CRA or from the city of Tallahassee.
Right.
They're asking to acquire the piece of property, again, at a price well above what it is probably worth. And the reason why is, they need this piece of property. However, anyone else that walks in the door are not gonna be able to do much with it. So tonight begins this process that will last for another three weeks until it's brought back before the city commission. I support it tonight, and let's go ahead and take a vote. The motion on the table made by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, is for staff recommendation, option number one and option number two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Passes three to one with Commissioner Porter in opposition. Commissioner Matlow has recused himself, and we will move on from there. Gentlemen, thank you for joining us. We are now on option number 13.03.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks the city commission's approval for two grants to accept and spend the proceeds from grants for TPD. They would be from the Fiscal Year 21 Justice Assistance Grant Program that's part of the Department of Justice, as well as a grant from the Florida Department of Transportation, Florida's Bicycle Pedestrian Focused Initiative for Communication and High Visibility Enforcement. I'm not gonna ask them to name a department for us, that's a long name. But the grants total $169,000, and we're seeking your approval for them. Chief Revel is here to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Excellent. Turn to the commission.
Move acceptance of staff recommendation.
Commissioner Richardson has properly moved staff recommendation of option number one and option number two, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five-zero. Thank you, Chief. We're on item number 13.04.
Thank you. May I ask that Fire Chief Jerome Gaines, he's participating via WebEx, be pulled up. Mayor Commissioners, this item involves the outdoor burning policy or ordinance. You'll recall, this came up about a year ago. There's been a great deal of discussion on this matter over the last year in terms of what the city can do and can't do. And the Fire Department's been involved, Chief Gaines has been involved, the city attorney's office has also been involved. We're at the point now to move forward. Staff recommends that an ordinance be created to include educational components to encourage mulching, bagging of vegetation. In other words, discourage burning, outdoor burning, and make sure that our ordinance is current with Florida law to reflect the everyday practice of the Fire Department. I'd like Fire Chief Jerome Gaines to provide just a little background, and I think you're all familiar with it, but for your benefit and the public's benefit, on this item. Chief Gaines.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, City Manager. Good afternoon, City Commissioners and Mayor. As City Manager said, as you remember, this issue was brought forward in 2020, and you gave us direction at the time to sit down and talk to the environmental groups, that, the environmental stakeholders. And we did that, and those discussions were led by Division Chief Annette Brown, who is in the audience tonight with Deputy Chief Sanders, if there's additional follow-up questions for that. But based on those conversations, as City Manager said, we proposed an ordinance that revised it so that we'd include the educational information and encourage and support a campaign to encourage the mulching and bagging of yard waste. We are recommending that you adopt this ordinance in order to bring the city into compliance with the current state laws, City Manager said. But also, for the last nine years, TFD has been practicing accordingly, based on state law. So we're asking to be in line with that. More importantly, we as a department cannot by law impose any regulations that are in direct conflict with Florida forestry. We have the legal authority over the management and enforcement for outdoor burning of yard waste. As a side note, we checked today as far as complaints or issues that we had in the city as they related to open burning. And we've had less than, fewer than 10 incidents involving open burning in the city for the last year. And I would attribute that to the restrictions that are in the state ordinance, but also in the ordinance that we have presented to you tonight. You have any questions? Myself and my staff's available to answer those.
Thank you, Chief. Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Mayor, we have a few speakers on this item. We will take Tabitha Fraser first, and then Shelby Green.
Fraser, thank you for joining us. Could you name an address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Tabitha Fraser, and I live at 415 Vintage Ride, Tallahassee, Florida 32303. I'm actually speaking here today as a Soil and Water Conservation Supervisor. Many of you know that this was a topic that was very close to our heart, and we were that environmental group that was working with the Fire Department. Although I am here to advocate for a different ordinance. I am all about the educational component. But I'd like us to join the 13 other municipalities and counties and give an all-out ordinance to ban, burn ban within city limits. Now, I'm not talking about roasting marshmallows. I'm not talking about having a campfire out back with your family. What I'm talking about is the current state ordinance, which is an eight-foot-by-eight-foot-by-eight-foot tall. That's a large bonfire. It can be within 25 feet of a building. As we are encouraging urban infill, more of our population is going into the center. We know that during our last two hurricanes that hit Tallahassee, we lost power for a significant period of time. People had their windows open. The Tallahassee Fire Department had to issue statements, both from the Tallahassee Democrat, telling everyone, "Stop burning your leaves. It's polluting people's houses." And so they encouraged people to put their sticks and everything out by the curb to be picked up. And so I'd like to go along with that and just say, "We're just not gonna burn in the city of Tallahassee. We're having more people come into our city. It's much healthier." And like I said, this is not gonna interfere with people's livelihoods. Roasting marshmallows and having a campfire in our backyard is one of my family's favorite things. What I'm specifically talking about is leaves, sticks, different things like that. It is a fire hazard, and I think it's fortuitous that this is being discussed in Fire Prevention Week. And I have to say that I do agree with the captain's comments at the dais earlier tonight, that the best way to stop a fire is to be proactive. And so I'm asking you to be proactive, and I encourage you, if there's any hesitation that we are unallowed to do this, to reach out to other 13-plus municipalities. Jacksonville Beach, Gulf Breeze, the city of Gainesville, the county of Duval County, the Miami-Dade County. These are much larger municipalities than us, and they've even gone so far as to burn it, stop a ban within the county. Anyway, I also wanna thank you so much for agreeing to do an educational component. This is something that Soil and Water has really worked on. It is important to us because people that actually burn their leaves and improve soil health. Soil health is what we need here in a city, especially with more development and the chemicals that come into the soil. Positive soil health helps strengthen our trees and makes our city environment that much more beautiful. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Shelby Green, and then Kara Fleischer.
Ms. Green, thank you for joining us. Could you name an address for the record, please?
Hello, my name is Shelby Green. I have some letters and maps included to pass out to you all.
Please give them to the clerk.
Hello, Board. Shelby Green, 519 Ingleside Avenue. I am also speaking as supervisor of the Soil and Water Conservation District. And while I support the commission's efforts to reduce air pollution, I have an issue with the language of the proposed revised ordinance. The term windy conditions is not quantified, and it's up to interpretation, which is likely to cause confusion and ordinance violations. Instead, I believe it should be associated to a minimum wind speed. Wind speed traveling at 4.5 miles an hour can easily transport air pollutants from one side of town to another. So it's vital that the wind speed is defined. And aside from wind speed, there are other environmental factors to be considered, such as the air quality index, temperature, and magnitude of hazardous pollutants like particulate matter 2.5 and particulate matter 10. By including these conditions and quantifying them, you can limit burning when the environmental conditions are least likely to carry pollutants. In addition, EPA has a tool called EnviroScreen that visualizes environmental pollutant data and compares it against the entire country. Tallahassee has four conditions, sorry, four communities. Tallahassee has four conditions, sorry, four communities with particulate matter two-point-five concentrations higher than ninety-five percent of communities across the entire country. Those communities are colored in red in the maps provided. Those communities also suffer from environmental justice issues and they have historically struggled against poor environmental conditions. I believe the educational component of this ordinance should also include targeted outreach in these communities with both residents and businesses, so they're aware of the personal and community impact they have when recreationally burning. And the last point I want to add is the revised ordinance will allow yard waste to be ignited after nine AM Eastern. If there's an ability to limit burning based on time, then there absolutely should be a limit based on current air conditions. In the coming months, our air quality is going to degrade due to prescribed burning occurring up north. The ordinance should recognize prescribed burning season and encourage limited recreational burning to reduce the already hazardous air quality. Thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker, please.
Kara Fleischer.
Fleischer, thank you for joining us. Do you name an address for the record, please?
Kara Fleischer, four-seven-oh-six Innisheers Court. I'm the Leon Soil and Water Conservation District Chair and it's nice to be back with you. This is my third time and as you know, we've been working on this project for over a year and I am grateful for the time and the energy and the effort that you all have put into it, as well as the attorney. We have come a long way, we've learned a lot. When I first came to you, we knew that other cities had burn ordinances and we wanted to find out how we could make ours as strong as possible. You sent me off from that first meeting, asked me to form a working group and asked me to research what other cities were doing. And we did that. We got environmental justice leaders, one of our volunteers was the former general counsel for DEP, and we did a deep dive into exactly what was going on. How can we get the best yard waste ordinance and what steps do we need to take? Well, we have come a long way and we understand that the city attorney has concerns about the current ordinance, which is very strong and I'm very proud that that's our ordinance in Tallahassee, that in order to burn, you must have a permit. Even though we weren't implementing that, it is something that we believe strongly makes our city better. So we did a open records request, and if this sounds familiar, it's because I've been emailing you this all along the way, but I want to make sure I get everyone understanding where we are, on May seventh to FDEX to ask what are the current burning ordinances that are allowed in the state and any information that they had on that to include that in open records request. Well, we got a treasure trove and we feel that we got the answer to those questions that you asked us to find. We found that in two thousand and twelve, when the new law was passed, Adam Putnam, who was the ag commissioner, sent out a letter and he asked that any city or county who wanted to maintain their current way of they were handling their burning could go into an open burning multilateral operating agreement with the FFS. It was a template and all they had to do was fill it out and work with the FFS and each one represents exactly what that home rule was for that city.
You have about thirty seconds.
I hope you give me a little bit of grace here because I've been working on this a long time and, okay, thanks. So here I have those thirteen operating agreements and they cover cities our size and they do not include those two pieces that the attorney has been focusing on, section two and section four, that, this might sound like jargon, but that the FDEX attorney has said was required. So these are special agreements that allow cities and counties to have their own home rule and to have their own burn ordinances. And so cities like Lakeland, cities like Orange City, city of Castleberry, Ormond Beach, Titusville, Gainesville, Jacksonville, Deltona, Marion County, it goes on and on. And this was just what came through our opens records request as of now, more are continuing to come in. So what we would ask today, we have been on this journey together, what we would ask is, city of Tallahassee, we want to protect our air. You just heard that the EPA has flagged us for PM two-point-five pollution as an environmental justice issue. Maisha Mitchell contacted me because we're working with the EPA for grants because city of the Tallahassee is the highest in the country, ninety-five to one-hundred percentile. That's serious and I know you all have the information that you'll look at. So what we would ask is a little more patience. Let us request from FFS this open burning multilateral operating agreement for ourselves. Because the way the law works is, if these cities have it, then we should be able to have it. If we can't have it, then they need to redo their own agreements.
Fleischer, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you.
Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
No further speakers on the item.
Excellent, open it up for discussion.
Can we, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can we get information from our attorney?
Sure.
On the recommendation?
Madam Attorney, would you like to weigh in?
Thank you, Mayor. My office certainly did engage in an exhaustive review of this matter. We have researched the legislative history, we have researched the laws that are on the books, and based on review of that law, it is my opinion that we have to, if we want to regulate outdoor burning, we would have to get the delegation from the Florida Fire Service. And if we get that delegation, we're going to have to apply their rules and the statute as they interpret it and as I have interpreted it based on looking at the law that is on the books and the legislative history. Now, as to why these other cities have something different, I cannot speak to that. I can only speak to what I read and what I interpret and what I have seen in the legislative history. I have further engaged in conversation with both the general counsel of DEP and the general counsel of the Florida, of the Florida, well, it's actually the Department of Ag, but responsible for the Florida Fire Service. When speaking to the general counsel, he basically told me that his, it was his opinion that we could not enter into an agreement where we don't follow their regulations. Now, I don't know how these other cities did it, I'm giving a recommendation to you based on my research and my review.
Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess the question would be, is it possible that we can research how those other cities did it? And if, at this point, that I think in conversation we may have had earlier, you had mentioned that they may have been grandfathered in, that they may have already had something in place prior to that twenty-twelve law that was enacted and may have been grandfathered in?
Some of the cities have maintained their same regulations that they've already always had. Some cities, as was provided by Ms. Fleischer, it appears that they entered into separate other agreements after this legislation was passed. But as you and I both know, administrations change and their views on what the law provides may change. And so what I have been trying to operate on is based on my interactions with the current administration, as well as my review of the written word in the statutes and in the legislative history.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Porter, the mayor pro temp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Attorney, City Manager, is there any downside if we were to see if we can get the delegated authority? If we took some time and see if we could do that?
I can't say there is a downside, that's for you to determine. However, what your fire department is requesting is not to have that delegated authority. So if you are determining that you want that delegated authority, that would be contrary to their recommendation.
Thank you.
Mayor pro temp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the public that's been involved in this and the fire department for over a year. So I see two basic questions here that we need to answer. The first question is, do we want to ban burning yard waste within the city limits? For me, that answer is yes. I think we're in an urban setting, I think it's inappropriate not to be actively burning large piles of yard waste next to your neighbors. I do have concerns about the air quality in our city. The second part of that question is, is it legal? And our attorney has given us a recommendation based on the interpretation of the law and reaching out to other council, and I think that's valid. And what was presented to us this week were other counties and municipalities that were able to enter into an agreement that allowed them to continue to ban yard waste. So we don't really have an answer to why that is and we don't have a definitive answer from FFS if we can enter into that same type of agreement. So I think if we answer the first question, which is, do we want to ban burning yard waste in city limits? If that answer is yes from this board, then we should pause and ask FFS if they would delegate the authority and will we be allowed to ban yard waste burning like other municipalities have done? And also give us an opportunity to research what those other communities have done and how they're operating their policies. Open to hearing from our colleagues of where they think we should go.
I would like to hear Madam Attorney's. I would like to hear Madam Attorney's response to your second item about, because I thought you've already had a conversation with, what is it, FD?
FFS.
FFS about that delegation.
Yes.
Would you restate?
So in my conversations with the general counsel for the Florida Fire Service, his opinion was the same as mine, based on his review of the statute as well as the legislative history. And he said that if we were to seek that delegation, we would have to follow, or we would be required to follow, their regulations regarding open burning and those regulations provide that it is allowed under certain conditions.
Commissioner Williams Cox.
I'd like to hear from the fire chief or the firefighters who are here amongst us on your take or your professional opinion or thoughts on this delegation. I see Chief Brown, I know you've been working on this.
Commissioner Williams Cox. I think Chief Sanders can probably provide.
Okay, Chief Sanders.
He's been, he looks like a young man, but he's been doing this for a while.
He's got a lot of experience.
A lot of practical experience here.
It started thin. So for us, it creates consistency.
Chief, could you give us your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Dean Sanders, deputy chief of operations for the Tallahassee Fire Department. And thank you for allowing me this opportunity today. But for us, it's consistency, something that we've, it's what we've been practicing for the last eight years, which is we make decisions that are in accordance to Florida Forest Service. They issue the burn permits. If for some reason we get a call for service to go and investigate someone who is burning or if it's illegal burning, we go out and investigate it. If they meet those setbacks, we allow them to burn, which is in accordance, which is in the language in the law. If they are outside of the setbacks, then we work with Forest Service to address the issue.
How often does this happen? How often does this happen?
I'll speak to that, Commissioner Williams Cox. When Chief Brown, we had her pull the information, last year, we had fewer than ten calls relating to that.
Okay.
Did you say ten?
Fewer than ten.
Oh, fewer than ten.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a question to the chief or whomever, if we, let's say, best-case scenario, we get the delegated authority, what impact does that have on your concern about consistency? What does that change?
Well, what would happen then, of course, we'd be responsible for issuing permits and also we'd be policing all of the complaints. And then the question comes, what authority, I guess by ordinance, we'd have the authority to enforce whatever is written, but we have to serve the county and the city. Unfortunately, that's where the inconsistency would come and making sure that our officers understand how to achieve the compliance. Now, if the ordinance is changed, of course, we can achieve that compliance, we can educate our employees on how to follow the law or the ordinance, but it does create an inconsistency for us. That's why we're trying to bring this language to be equal and consistent to what is the Florida law.
Okay, so your concern then is the difference between how we handle the city and the county?
And what's written by Florida law.
Right, right.
Yes, so if you get the delegation, then we have no choice but to find a way to enforce.
Okay, and I understand that, I think where I'm at right now is if we can get the delegated authority, I would like to pursue that just to see if we can. You know, we're hearing from elected officials whose job is to, the supervisor board, you know, give recommendations on this. I certainly don't want to make your job more difficult, but at the same time, the city is distinctly different from the county for a reason. And so if we need to accommodate that, then we need to accommodate that. But thank you for answering my questions.
So Chief, if I understand it correctly, you're asking this board and the recommendation from the men and women of the fire department, along with the city attorney's office, is to basically codify what we've been doing for nearly a decade?
Yes, that is our recommendation.
Okay, well, I'm going to support the recommendation from our fire department and our legal counsel. And look, I think we all agree that if we need to come back and revisit this, we will come back and revisit this. But for now, I'm going to support the staff recommendation if there is a motion for staff recommendation, move forward.
Mr. Mayor, I would move staff recommendation.
Okay. Commissioner Richardson properly moves staff recommendation, which is option number one. I will second that motion. Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, first of all, certainly want to thank Kara and her work group.
Of course.
And those who have come and worked on this for a lengthy amount of time and the kind of information that they've gathered. But I can't disregard what we have heard from our own attorney, who is paid to represent our interest, and the department that has served us in this capacity for decades, decades. And we're talking about fewer than ten instances where this has occurred. I think that what we need to work towards is improving our education, the education of our community over the next several years about these same issues that we've discussed here today. And as the mayor mentioned, if we need to come back and revisit it, then we certainly can. But I think it's, at this point, an issue of community education and certainly, you know, the enforcement that goes along with any violation of state law. But I think it has a lot more to do with community educating, community education and enforcing any violation of state law at this point.
Commissioner Williams Cox.
I want to ditto what the dean has said, but I also would like to add that if we see a trend upward, because when we're saying less than ten in a city our size, if we see the trend, a trend going upward, then it would be time for us to revisit this and perhaps look at some other mitigating issues. But at this point, if we're dealing with, as the chief has said, in the city limits, less than ten, that's, you know, that's, to me, that's a lot to bring on against the advice of the attorney and the people who have been doing it and will need to do, continue to do it, because, yeah, I can't put a fire if you call me to do it, so we need you to be able to do it. So I want to just add that piece that if we see the trend going upward in this, then we need to revisit.
Excellent. Commissioner, excuse me, Mayor pro temp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarity, Chief Sanders, how many yard waste burns have happened over the course of a year of any scale within the city limits? Do we know that number?
I don't have it on hand. I can get it, that's information I can pull.
Okay. I'm just raising the point, you know, these burns happen across town in different neighborhoods. This isn't something we necessarily have hard numbers before us on, but a number that was presented by the Leon Soil and Water Conserv- was presented by the Leon Soil and Water Conservation District from the EPA is a justice hotspot because these communities have air quality risks that are worse than 95% to 100% of the country. So when I read that statement, I'm not sure it can get any worse before we decide to take some sort of action or really explore. Maybe it's not the backyard burns that are the only thing affecting our air quality. I don't know, but I look at that number, and it's very concerning, and it seems like we should be looking into that further rather than going backwards and making, even though our ordinance hasn't been enforced, we are weakening the ordinance that we have on books. And we do see other cities and counties that are still actively enforcing their ordinance, and I don't see that they've had legal challenges where they've been stripped down. So I think maybe that's a bigger question for the state, maybe that's a question for the court. But when I look at other cities in Florida that are accomplishing this for their community, it begs the question, is it fair that we're held to a standard that other cities aren't? And I think unless we ask that question, we'll never get the answer. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Williams-Cox.
I want to, you know, I like data, and they've provided us with some data, but just looking at these pictures, don't tell me that this is happening in the city.
Right.
Some of this may be in the county. We, you know, without drilling down to know where they, whether it's occurring, yeah, 95% sounds like a big number, but where is it? You know, some in the city, some other places. The other part is that we have 412 cities in the state of Florida. I know that because of my civics education and legal cities work. And we're hearing that 13 are doing this, and we don't know when they started doing it, they're just, you know, years ago, they just started doing it. So again, I don't think that we are, well, let me speak for me. I am not in a, I'm not, I don't have enough to go against the legal advice of our city attorney or our fire department. So I'm, I hear what you're saying, Mayor Protim, you're right, that does sound horrible. But the thing about data is that you've got to know the source, you've got to know what's going on with it, because I can give you all kinds of stuff that'll make your hair stand up, but it doesn't make it true, and it doesn't make it what we need for this subset. I'm not saying they're giving us erroneous data, I'm just saying we need to know where was this taken, where was it measured? Where, is it in the city? Is it in the county? Or, you know, where is it occurring? Because in Leon County, we have one city, and if you ask people, you live in Tallahassee? Yes, we live in Tallahassee. Do you live in the city or the county? Many don't know. They just know we live in Tallahassee. So I think that we need to think about that.
All right, the motion on the table is for staff recommendation made by Commissioner Richardson. I seconded it. Let's go ahead and bring this in for a vote, so we can take a quick break and come back for the public hearing at 5:00. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nein.
And it passes 3-2 with the Mayor Protim and Commissioner Porter in opposition. All right, so colleagues, it is 4:53. Literally, let's take a seven-minute break. We have a publicly advertised public hearing at 5:00. We're in recess. Scheduled public hearing at 5:00 on the city of Tallahassee's proposed budget. Before we do that, I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Diane Williams-Cox for a special presentation. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are favored to have among all of our staff here in the city of Tallahassee with great talent. Today, you're going to see and hear and see an example of just one of those individuals. Pastor Kenneth Frame is one of our parking ambassadors and one of the nicest people you could ever meet. He is very talented, and you've probably heard some of his work, or you've seen some of his work. Today, he's going to come to you and give you another piece of his work. Pastor Frame, would you please come forward? I want to recognize his wife, who is here with him.
Pastor, thank you so much for joining us.
Good evening, commissioners, city manager, and all you guys in your respective places. I love this city so much. It is a beautiful place, and Cascade Park is such a beautiful park. And I wanted to do something special to highlight our park so people around the world can know that what Cascade Park is. So I wrote a poem about the park. It's called "The Cascade Experience." Welcome to Cascade Park, the experience of your life. Here in this marvelous place is where dreams come alive, a 24-acre classroom that will open your eyes. Its attention to detail and fabulous tastes touches the soul of this remarkable state, a state of beauty and a state of pride in the city of Tallahassee where dreams come true. An imagination fountain is just waiting on you to bring a little joy into your children's lives as they play and laugh and have a good time, as the water dances underneath their feet. For the love in this place can't be beaten. You see, the pond that sits in the middle of this place is surely to take your breath away as nature moves and birds fly across our beautiful Tallahassee skies. A all-American city that's full of pride, a gateway of excellence with you and mine, with history and culture and so much more, as we honor our heroes who fought in wars and changed the lives of this landscape. But Cascade Park is a special place. You will be impressed when you start your day as you take a nice walk down Fam U Way and see the beauty of the footprints of life, for this road runs from side to side and captures the beauty of every life. So take your shoes off and relax your feet, and have a nice cool glass of sweet iced tea, and enjoy the music of our heartbeat as family and friends dance in the street when the ample theater comes alive and gives you the flavor of our Tallahassee vibe. So when you get tired, it's okay, for our Tallahassee Hotel is just steps away, a place you can relax and get a good night's sleep and enjoy our restaurants and fine cuisine. For your happiness and life is everything to us, so you can be blessed by our Tallahassee love as this park flows with historical grace to show the whole world the beauty of this place. So please have a slice of our southern taste with a pinch of goodness and our awesome faith, for God has truly blessed this state. So have a nice day when you jog and run, and take a little time to have some fun, for Cascade Park is a spectacular place because it was designed for you all to enjoy your day. So when you get ready to go back home, please take a photo of our Cascade Park form.
Pastor, thank you so much. Thank you for your service to Tallahassee. We certainly do appreciate it. As an employee and part of the family here, we certainly appreciate it. The poem was absolutely fantastic. Commissioner Williams-Cox for comment.
Thank you so very, very much, and that's exactly how we feel. Thank you for capturing how we feel about Tallahassee and Cascades Park and many other places around town. Thank you so much. Now tomorrow, he will be reciting his poem again for the Tourist Development Council meeting. So if you missed it today, catch it again tomorrow at 9:00 AM. Thank you.
Absolutely wonderful, and I think you have set the tone for the public hearing, and we certainly do appreciate that. With that, let's go into the public hearing. I'm going to ask our audio staff, please, if you're having a hard time hearing me, just remind me to speak into the microphone or give me a signal so that we are broadcasting and it's being picked up. I'm sorry about that if you had difficulties at the previous meeting. So we are now on the public hearing, 15.01, the first of two public hearings on the fiscal '22 budget plan. I will turn this over to the city manager to begin. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This begins the final stages of your budget approval. You have guided us through the budget development process over numerous workshops and feedback. We reached September where we have two public hearings that brings about finality. This year's budget totals $1,360,000. It is made up of $774 million in operating and $262 million, excuse me, $262 million of capital. It sets a strong framework for five years of capital investment of approximately $1 billion, which will keep our city running well and reinvested. Robert Wigan is our Director of Resource. He has led this way from a staff point of view. He's here to hit the high points, including the proposed and adopted millage rate of 4.1 mils, which holds steady for the sixth consecutive year, is one of the lowest in the state of Florida. So I'd like Robert to kind of walk us through the elements of it, and of course, it will culminate with the city attorney walking us through a very detailed statutory process.
Excellent. Quick question, Robert, before we begin. Madam Attorney, will we do the statutory process before or after public comment?
Well, it is, I have it sort of rolled into the entire process, so the public comment is a part of what I will go through as a part of the budget adoption process.
Right, I would assume that we're going to have the presentation, then we'll have public comment, any discussion or comments, and then we will walk through the process formally from your office.
To some degree, yes. So I have an introductory statement.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll have the public hearing, and then I can complete the remainder.
Excellent. Okay. Robert, thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor, commissioners, and members of the public, appointed officials also, one of whom is very critical tonight to walk us through this process. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. I'll make this brief so that we can move directly into public comment, which is the purpose for our meeting today and on September 22nd. Tonight, we'll take the following actions. We'll receive public input on the fiscal year 2022 proposed millage rates, operating and capital budgets for the city and the Downtown Improvement Authority. We'll also adopt on first vote tentative millage rates, operating and capital budgets for the city and Downtown Improvement Authority at the same time, and then we'll approve employee healthcare plan rates for the fiscal, I'm sorry, for the calendar year 2022. This budget, since we met approximately five times over the last year, most recently July 7th, where we had a proposed budget recommendation, as the city manager mentioned, maintains the millage rate at 4.1 mils for the sixth year in a row. It is the lowest among Florida municipal government, the 25 largest Florida municipal governments, and it supports public safety, public infrastructure, parks and recreation, and neighborhood affairs, and housing and community resilience. The, since July 7th, we have also updated current position control of the corresponding salaries and benefits, and we've moved OPS positions to permanent positions, all in the balanced budget that we're presenting today. We have also had meetings with CHP and Blue Cross and Blue Shield where they proposed health plan contracts for the 2022 calendar year, and so those are finalized and reflected in the budget before you. Lastly, water and wastewater rate study results have been finalized to balance our two operating funds, and in keeping with public involvement based on your direction and strategic planning, this budget accomplishments, investment in infrastructure, public safety, economic development, impact on poverty, organizational effectiveness, quality of life, and public trust. As the recently provided final study was provided for water and wastewater, I wanted to hit a couple key points. As we discussed through the budget process and over the last year, we've balanced the water and wastewater funds with an annual CPI adjustment that will be, that will be continued to be applied to both water and wastewater. Wastewater will not require any rate increase as proposed in the, as recommended in the rate study, and with water, we are recommending an 85 cents per month increase to our average customer. Those, that rate increase would go into effect in January, and in combination with the CPI, as you see on the chart that's displayed above, it would move our monthly average bills from $71.19 to $73.88. It is key to note that we've identified those other communities that have advanced wastewater treatment. We made the commitment 10 years ago to enter into a $225 million investment, which accounts for our consideration of discharge and ensuring the purity of our water and natural springs that are, that surround our area. We're also recommending, based on the rate study, that inspection fees, system charges, and septicage fees for new connections and for growth will be increased effective January of 2022 with CPI adjustments thereafter. The effective, those latter items that I've mentioned, the last review for those was in 2006, so that was the last time those fees were reviewed, and so it was timely to update those connection fees and those new customer growth fees with the 20-year master plan, which you will discuss in a later agenda item after the public hearing. With that as background, the process guided by the city attorney, which includes 11 steps as noted above, will enable us to take public comment, adopt the millage rate for the city and the Downtown Improvement Authority, and approve the health plan, healthcare plan contract. Unless there are any questions about the budget updates or the process, I'll ask the city attorney to walk us through that process of opening up the public hearings for both the millage rate and for the budgets and take public comment.
Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. There are several steps that we have to go through today pursuant to the Truth and Millage Act. The Truth and Millage Act requires certain steps in a certain order, and those certain things must be read into the record. Those steps are in the agenda item, if you want to follow there. But the first of them is to read into the record the following. The proposed millage rate for fiscal year 2022 is 4.1 mils for the city of Tallahassee and 1 mil for the Tallahassee Downtown Improvement Authority, which millage rate is more than the aggregate rollback rate of 3.9867 by 3.3%. This tentative millage rate is equal to last year's rate of 4.1 mils. Resolution number 21-R-25, which is provided to state the percentage that the tentative millage rate is above the rollback rate, is in attachment A. The next two steps are to allow public comment on the city's proposed millage and proposed budget. If anyone has signed up as a participant, they can speak on either the proposed millage or the proposed budget for the city at this time. In compliance with Florida Statute Section 200.065, the date of this hearing was included in the trim notice that was mailed to all property owners in August by the Leon County Property Appraisers.
Wonderful. Mr. Clerk.
Mayor, we have five speakers on this item at this public hearing. The first is Joey Davis, the second will be Michael McLaughlin.
Mr. Davis, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
I know you all know me, but I'm Joey Davis, 1813 Bitterroot Trail, and I'm here representing your firefighters. Mayor Commissioners, as you approach the final review of this coming year's fiscal budget, I need to address a concern with you that's building within our fire department. As you know, the fire chief was directed earlier this year to cut over $1 million for the remaining fiscal year '21 budget due to the right decision of this commission to delay a needed increase in the fire services fee. Due to multiple cost-saving measures that had to be enacted, our mandatory overtime has increased year over year by almost 200%. This means our firefighters are much more likely to be told at the end of a 24-hour shift that they're unable to leave and must work another 24 hours before going home to their family. This has occurred over 150 times since June 1st of this year. Commissioners, your firefighters will work whatever amount of time is required of them to provide fire and medical services to the people of Tallahassee and Leon County, as well as to provide, as well as to provide best service when called upon for statewide disasters. However, we will soon see a level of burnout in our fire department that will have lasting effects. You've all been informed about our concerns with current and past cost allocations being a drain on the fire services fund. Although we feel this current shortage may well have been needless, it is certainly addressable. We feel a case could be made to utilize some of the COVID relief funds the city has received to deal with this shortfall, but at the bottom line, our fire department cannot effectively function without the fire chief having control over his budget, including allocated costs, as well as all tools at his disposal to address staffing. I say this to you right now because I believe in just the last few minutes, we've been put under a tropical storm warning, at least to the coast. We have men and women that have been working overtime repeatedly over the summer. We have men and women that have been working overtime repeatedly over the summer. I appreciate your listening, and I hope that you thoughtfully consider what I have to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Michael McLaughlin, and then Vernon Henderson.
Mr. McLaughlin, thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michael McLaughlin. I'm at 100 Cadiz Street, and I'm here to speak on the budget, in particular, the very large and increased amount dedicated to the TPD. So rather than continuing to foolishly pour increasingly large amounts of money into our police's department, which has demonstrated itself to be thoroughly inept at keeping people safe, the city should increase funding for innovative services, public broadband, maybe a city-owned grocery store on the South Side, or really no things like free rooftop solar panels for low-income residents. The city should move funding toward services that actually are demonstrated to support the people's needs, to reduce crime, to reduce poverty and inequality, particularly in light of HB1. It is incredibly important that we do not increase police department budgets, as they've been shown not to. Increases in police budgets have, throughout history, demonstrated, have been demonstrated to be ineffective at reducing crime and preventing poverty and inequality. What we need instead is a people's budget, one that centers the needs of the people and builds from there. If you need some ideas about what that might look like, I encourage you to check out my own organization, it's not my org, it's the one I'm involved with, I don't own it, Tallahassee Community Action Committee. You can check us out at tallacack.com, and you can read through our proposed people's budget, which would reduce crime and inequality by supporting the well-being of local residents by transitioning the budget we put together, about 2/3 of the police's budget, toward other services to support the people's needs. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Is Vernon Henderson, to be followed by Kelsey Norville.
Mr. Henderson, thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
All right. Thank you, manager, city manager, mayor, commissioners, and city attorney and city clerk. Good afternoon. My name is Vernon Henderson, and I am a resident of the city of Tallahassee. Because of my employment background, my address is protected by Florida Statute 119.071. I am here to speak to you about one of the greatest groups of employees in the city. They are the Tallahassee Police Department Forensic Unit, which is a part of the Criminal Investigation Bureau. This unit is comprised of 10 hard-working folks. While most of us are sleeping, these folks are called upon to respond 24 hours a day and 7 days a week. They often miss birthdays, anniversaries, graduations, funerals, and other events that most other folks often can't attend, or we can attend. The folks of this unit, forensic unit, are called upon to go to some horrific scenes and sometimes receive national media attention. Some of these scenes that you may be aware of, there's a quadruple homicide involving the young mother and her three children. You may also remember the shooting at our local federal prison, and Stroger Library, and also the shooting at Hot Yoga. These are just a few of the scenes that these folks will never be able to forget. Nobody wants to see forensic fans pull up in the front of their homes or businesses. Tallahassee Police Department detectives constantly rely on the forensic unit to document, collect, and preserve evidence, and often these CSIs can provide these detectives with suspects that help lead these detectives towards the arrest and conviction. The most gratifying results of a CSI is to help bring closure and justice to the friends and families of victims of our city. This forensic unit has requested for many years, including this budget, for 2022, additional staff and salary adjustments. For this Tier 1 budget request, this unit has again requested more help in salary adjustments to help retain these city employees of this unit. I believe it got stopped somewhere. Like I said, it was a Tier 1 request, but it got somewhere and stopped in the process, and we're just hoping that you can bring it back. So please add this back for consideration in the budgets, and that's all I have unless you have some questions.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Kelsey Norville, and then our last speaker will be Rachel Mecklenburg.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Kelsey Norville.
Can you pull the microphone down just? Thank you, thank you.
And my address is also protected, my employment for Florida Statute 119.071. And I am also here today to discuss the Police Department Forensic Unit's request for reorganization and budget increase. The members of the forensic unit are not cops. They do not carry guns or handcuffs. They carry cameras and flashlights. Due to how closely they work with sworn personnel, they are often called upon to work as first responders when it's beneficial to the community, as it should be, such as hurricanes, which we might have soon, and the ongoing pandemic. They are, however, suddenly not first responders in situations where it would be beneficial to them. For example, the forensic personnel were not included in the governor's $1,000 bonuses. Their forensic personnel were also not included when vaccines were first becoming available to sworn law enforcement, even though several of the unit's members were over 50 at the time, and even though their job requires them to interact with the general public, they're doing responding to the ER on multiple occasions. It should, of course, be noted that these decisions were not made by the city, and we are not accusing anyone in the city of that missed moment, but they do affect forensic personnel. Now, please bear in mind and know that there are significant pay disparities between the forensic unit and the rest of the department, and between TPD's forensic unit and other agencies. The department recently added several CST positions. CST stands for Community Service Technician. They are a new position at the apartment, or department, sorry. They respond to such calls as minor traffic accidents and delayed burglaries. The requirements to become a CST are simply to have a high school degree and a driver's license. The starting pay is 18.03 an hour. The CSTs do not work on call, or nights, or weekends, or holidays. By contrast, the requirements to work with forensic unit are standard of the field, a four-year degree in hard science, forensic science, or similar degree, or some combination of schooling and prior experience. The starting pay is 17.08 an hour. This job also naturally requires members to work nights, weekends, and holidays. Additionally, this work often involves working with people either on the last day of their lives, or for their families, the worst day of their lives. And on top of that, sometimes working 16-hour days, the mental and physical toll cannot be accounted for. And yet, some of those, I'm sorry, and yet, for those who keep track, the CSTs start off making more for easier and less work. The forensic unit has naturally been asking to expand for years. The forensic unit has not added additional forensic positions since 1998. In 1998, I was a fourth grader at Springwood Elementary. During that time, the field of forensics has changed and expanded drastically. I won't go with a long list of all the things that have been added since the '90s, but in the '90s, touch DNA wasn't a thing we could do, and now forensic personnel swab hundreds of items every single year and help solve crimes with that touch DNA. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next is Rachel Mecklenburg. Mr. Sims, do you want to speak also on budget? Okay. You come ahead, and I just wanted to be sure I get him in line, and then I think Mr. Sims will be the last speaker.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Mecklenburg, and my address is also protected per Florida Statute 119.071. I am here today to finish the discussion regarding TPD's request to reorganize the forensic unit. As was previously mentioned, there are significant disparities between the TPD forensic unit and other civilian units at the same department. There are also disparities between the pay in TPD's forensic unit and other nearby agencies, and by nearby, I mean less than 5 miles from where we are right now. The Florida Department of Law Enforcement, FDLE, has similar requirements, and yet the starting pay is 24.49 an hour. Up until recently, the Leon County Sheriff's Office wasn't as much of an option, but their forensic unit is switching from sworn to non-sworn, like TPD. LCSO, it should be noted, worked five homicides last year and two the year before. During that same period, TPD worked 29 and 24 homicides respectively. Now, get this, LCSO was smart when they switched to civilian. They know who's in TPD's forensic units and what they get paid, and what kind of qualifications and experience they have. So, being smart, LCSO didn't just match the starting pay here, they passed it. The entry-level position starts out at 1961 an hour with comparable requirements. Remember what Kelsey said the TPD forensic position starts at? 1708 an hour. But that 1961 an hour is just for the entry-level position. LCSO plans on having three levels of specialists. Of the eight TPD forensic specialists, six are qualified to start in the forensic specialist 2 position, which starts at 2172 an hour, and the specialist 3 position starts at 2379 an hour. That is an automatic raise for all but one person in TPD's forensic unit. These are not hypothetical numbers either. LCSO is advertising positions literally right now. People from TPD's forensic unit are applying there, and there is little reason to think they won't get hired. If this doesn't serve as a wake-up call, I don't know what will. If the situations with FDLE and LCSO weren't persuasive enough, an internal staff inspection included in our folders of supporting documents also spells out the need for more personnel and more appropriate pay. The department has recommended and asked for additional pay and/or personnel for the forensic unit in the form of reorganization. It is my understanding that the city has been made aware of this request. So I am here to request the following. Let the city take a second look at the department's request, and if you're somehow on the fence about this, ask yourself what the forensic unit has to ask themselves. If you want to work forensics in the Tallahassee area between FDLE, LCSO, and TPD, with what we've presented here today, where would you choose to work? And if your answer isn't TPD, you've got a serious problem on your hands. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I have all kinds of supporting documents for you guys. If you would like them.
Please give them to the clerk, and he will pass them out to us. Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker, Stanley Sims.
Sims, thanks for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
I'm still at 1320, thank the Lord. I want to say to, about our police, and I'm not retracting, but Chief, we have a lot of your officers. They come up to me, unasked, and they say, "Mr. Sims, give us a break. We've got some issues. We're working on it." And I want to say this in clarity. I'm so thankful to have law enforcement. With law enforcement, as I've learned, when my illness is not just about arresting people, but this atmosphere, we can't clean the carpet with all of this dirt up under the rug. And my brother, I love you, Curtis, but 24 years on that dais don't put you in a position where me, as a citizen, can't question your decisions. That rant that you did was the same rant that Scott did when the Uber representative came down here and accused him of blackmailing him. Now, you didn't go down to the federal courthouse. I went down there every day. I heard the tapes. Your name was not called. The only person named that was called in that courtroom was our city manager. So, yeah, you. It was called in that courtroom. Scott said, "The deal is, my work here is done." Reese, Ben Pennegry, Wayne, I forgot the other one. It was four of them. We heard audio and video how they intertwined, scooped the loose. I pay. May I recommend that a moratorium be placed on any city employee that makes 100, over $150,000 a year for two years? Why am I asking that to do that, Diane? Because he said, "We, the people that was lucky, that wasn't making $15 an hour, they should just be lucky to have a job."
You're at 20 seconds.
I don't believe that's luck. I think the luck is at 150. And we blessed, we don't have but 200, according to them, we don't have but a little over 200 employees that make less than $15 an hour. That could bring those employees up immediately during a pandemic.
Mr. Sims, thank you so much.
And not have to wait to 2016.
Three minutes have run out. Thank you very much.
A lot of other people, three minutes run out.
Mayor, I do not think we have any other speakers on this public hearing.
Okay. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The next two, the next two steps, four and five, are to allow public input on the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed millage of 1 mill and the Downtown Improvement Authority's proposed budget. In compliance with Florida Statute Section 200.065, the date of this hearing was included in the TRIM notice, which was mailed to all property owners in August by the Leon County Property Appraiser.
At this point, you need a motion on that item?
Begin.
Or, oh, I'm sorry, no, there are no speakers on this item, on the Downtown Improvement Authority.
So there are no speakers on the Downtown Improvement Authority proposed millage rate?
Correct.
Just making sure I'm getting it straight.
Yes.
Okay. Open it up for any comments, questions, motions, or how do you want the motion? Are you looking for a motion right now on the proposed Downtown Improvement Authority?
This is the period of time during which there will be discussion by commissioners, and then after the discussion, I can ask for a motion.
Correct. And what would that motion be?
Motion to approve the tentative millage rate of 4.1 mills as set forth in Resolution 21-R-25, attachment A, and reflecting the proposed aggregate millage rate is more than the rollback rate of 3.9867 by 3.3%.
Okay. So let's open it up for discussion. If that is the direction that we're looking for, you just heard the language, and we can ask the city attorney to repeat it again. But Commissioner Porter, questions, comments?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So are we taking this number my number?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Porter, I was asking.
That's okay.
Mayor Pro Tim, I interrupted you. Could you restate?
No, that's okay. I'm sorry if I missed this. Are we taking, are we making a motion for every single number, like every single item? Yes?
Madam Attorney.
So what you will do is you will, you will, there will be a motion on the tentative millage rate, then there will be a motion on the city's tentative budget, and there will be a motion on the Downtown Improvement Authority's millage, tentative millage rate, and then the Downtown Improvement Authority's tentative budget.
Okay.
And then the healthcare rate.
Okay, thank you. I was wondering if, you know, we had some speakers obviously speak about the forensics team and how that was something that was a Tier 1 included in our budget. I was wondering if anyone has any comment on just some background on that, if we have any?
Mr. Baner?
Can you clarify that, Commissioner? I'm not sure I understand the question. If we have any comment as it relates to that?
Yeah, I mean, we heard from some speakers, and they seem to indicate that this was included in our budget, and then it was sort of knocked down a few tiers of prioritization. I was wondering if you had any comment?
Let me ask.
Hold on. Clarification, are you speaking specifically to the forensic unit?
Yes.
Okay. I had the same questions. We will come back to our budget, correct? Or is now the appropriate time to address those questions?
It is, it's appropriate, yes.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Commissioner Porter is correct in asking for clarification on the forensic unit testimony that we were hearing earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to ask Robert to answer that more directly, but generally speaking, the budget's put together, not everything makes it in the budget. I think the suggestion that was in the budget is, that's not correct. It's part of deliberation that happens at the department level and in the budget office. And so, of course, as you heard, it wasn't necessarily adopted for that work unit. I wouldn't say that's entirely unusual. We have a lot of work units. We do have a lot of market pressure. I think what you heard, I think the underlying theme of what you heard in that work unit is there's, there's competitive market pressure, and I can tell you, that's true for a lot of our work units. We're trying to deal with that the best we can. We have upward pressure on wages, and I think that's what you heard in that case. Robert, if you can elaborate a little more about the deliberation of what we included and didn't include, and of course... and didn't include, and of course, the department's at the table. And, and I'll clarify this, and sometimes you hear this, and I don't think we should be confused by it. There's a reference of the city as if the department's not the city. The department is, of course, the city. It's all one piece, and this fits within the budget, and this is a general fund budget item. Robert, do you have anything you can add to that?
Yeah, a li, a little bit. Reese, thank you for, for that overview, that, and, and what you said is accurate. The, the forensics unit as part of non-sworn officers are in our general government employees. And so when we approached the pay structure for our general government employees, of course, we looked at, at what the union negotiations were for TPD and, and TFT, and recognized the, the market pressures that we had in the general government employees, which is why we brought the recommendation for the twenty-five hundred dollars as a minimum raise and four point five percent as a, as the proposed raise. We also then identified healthcare. It's been three years now that we're working from the six, seventy, thirty percent cost sharing to eighty and twenty percent cost sharing. That, that intention was to put more money in, in those employees' pockets immediately with healthcare and flex bucks being also increased. What I, what I will say is where there have been market pressures, we do comparative studies of positions. And so this one sounds like with the recent moves at Leon County Sheriff's Office with other, with other forensics units, that it may be time, and, and we would ask our human resource department to work with us to, to identify what that pay scale should be and where it is in keeping with the rest of the pay scale.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add to that.
Sir, Mr. Baner?
Commissioner Porter, I think this may help with your question, too. So your action to approve this budget would not restrict the ability for the, the department and our HR folks to do that. This would set the budget, it would set the general fund budget, it would set the department's budget at approximately sixty-two million dollars. Where we do find acute pressure, you're not voting on the wages necessarily of those individuals. Now, you are voting on a, a raised package, as, as Mr. Wigan has pointed out, that in a blanket approach, attempts to deal with some of this. So I, I certainly believe that will help some. But in those areas where we have acute pressure, we look at it, you know, intra-budget period, and, and we're not restricted from that. However, the budget is what the budget is. And so that would, that would challenge department directors, in this case, the police chief, to find ways within his budget to manage things if he was trying to, to make wage changes and changes in personnel. So the, the flexibility always exists. This sets kind of the cap, that kind of sets the universe of things, and that, you know, during the course of budget process, of course, not everything makes it, makes it in.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are in commission discussion right now, and questions, discussion, whatever we want. The final outcome is we will need to have a discussion and a motion on the proposed millage rate for the city of Tallahassee, the proposed budget for the city of Tallahassee, separate motion. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, I will come to you for a motion on the proposed downtown improvement authority millage rate, since you're our representative, and a motion for the proposed downtown improvement authority budget. So there will be a total of four motions that will be made at the end of discussion. If we want to go in a different direction, well, then, then we'll, 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 we'll have that discussion. And I'm going to ask Madam Attorney at the appropriate time to help us with the appropriate language that is needed to meet the state definition and all of the requirements, okay? So with that, let's open it up. Commissioner Williams Cox.
I move acceptance of the proposed millage rate of four point one.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved, and Madam Attorney, if you will put us in the right posture, the motion will be made by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, and seconded by Commissioner Richardson with regards to the city of Tallahassee millage rate.
It's my understanding that Commissioner Williams Cox has made a motion for the city's tentative millage rate of four point one mils as set forth in resolution twenty-one dash R dash twenty-five, attachment A, and that it reflects the proposed aggregate millage rate is no more than the rollback rate of three, three point nine eight six seven by three point three percent. That is the motion, as I understand.
That is the motion made by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Is there any discussion on the motion on the table? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Let's open it up for discussion on the city budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a follow-up on the, on the forensics unit. How many employees are we talking about, and what's the fiscal impact to make it more competitive with LC SO or FDLE?
Chief, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for the question, and I'm going to take a liberty here just a second to say the men and women that do work for us in our forensic unit are the best anywhere in the state. So the more we can pay them, the better. I realize that falls within budget constraints and all, but they are the best of the best. So I just wanted to publicly thank them for what they do each and every day. We have, honestly, Shaun Yaw is our supervisor, who, who is here today. Total people is eight? Ten persons total, right.
So, just rough math, between the, the pay that they cited in FDLE, it's probably fifteen thousand dollars a year per employee. Does that sound reasonable? No?
Works for me, sir.
Do, do you have room within this current budget to address some of those concerns?
We cer, we certainly can address a, a lot of those, those issues within our budget due to our, our shortages in, in sworn personnel. I'm hesitant to do that at times because we need those sworn personnel, and, but you have all been very faithful and committed to if we need more personnel, at that time, I could come back to, to you all, and you would support that motion. So yes, to answer your question, yes, I do have room within my budget that we could make those adjustments.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. And as you said, we have the best, and we also want to pay the best, you know, from my perspective, and anything we can do to push in that direction, I'm happy to do. My second question, Mr. City Manager, the, the fire department mentioned a hundred and fifty overtime, thank you, Chief, I'm sorry. The fire department mentioned a hundred and fifty overtime shifts since the, the month of June. Can, can, can you just give us an update on what's going on over there? Is it budget constraints? What are we going to do to resolve having asked for that much overtime?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim.
Commissioner Williams Cox, on point.
Point of clarification. It was not the fire department. It was the fire union that said that. So I just want the record to reflect that it was Joey from the fire union that said that and not the fire chief, who would be the spokesperson for the fire department.
Sure, well, the question remains a hundred and fifty overtime shifts since June.
I'll be happy to answer that, Commissioner. Chief Gaines, I believe, is still with us.
Chief?
On WebEx, and, and Commissioner Williams Cox is right, that was the union representation. And, and as we get Chief on the line, and if we don't, I, I probably can take a good stab at the answer. Actually, we're very fortunate in the fire department to be fully staffed. We rarely are understaffed. I know we've had that condition in our police department where we have numerous vacancies. So it's not an issue of unfilled vacant positions. The chief could speak more directly to the operational need. I think it, some of it is apparent in the current times that we have that there's more need for our paramedics and our firefighters. And so my guess is that is the operational need. That would be out of the direction of the fire chief and the battalion chiefs. I don't believe the chief is, well, I'm looking at the screen, I don't believe he's with us.
Okay.
Cynthia? And if, if you can give us a minute, we'll get him back on the line, or Cynthia can answer, but I'm pretty sure I've probably described the answer correctly. It's operational need. It's not a need where there's unfilled positions or there's, I, I think the suggestion was there was a holdback of money that would have led to the overtime. That's not the case.
I would add that in the past few months, the fire department has responded to Surfside and to the hurricane impacts out, out west. We're working closely with them to ensure that those are reimbursed as federal eligible events, and so I think that would also impact shifts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you, Robert.
I guess the.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The baseline of my question is, is, is how do we get to a point where we're not requesting that much overtime of our, of our firefighters? And is that a budget issue? Or is that, you're saying that's just an operational issue?
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yeah, let me, I, I agree. I would be interested in looking at the numbers, too, and I'm my city manager, but I, I think that we should always be in a position, for instance, when we send our search and rescue down to Surfside, that, I think that's inappropriate, being good neighbors here in Florida. Obviously, that's not the bulk of, of all of it, but we have had some extenuating circumstances to keep into, keep in mind as well. But, Mr. Mayor, comment on that as well.
And, you know, I think it is a great point, and if you find yourself, again, we just refer to the forensics unit, and my guess, without knowing the details of what they're working, they're working overtime. And we'll find ourselves at times where we're understaffed because you have vacancies, or the amount of work has changed significantly. When you find that to be a permanent recurrence, then we deal with that from an HR point of view. We either ask for new positions, we change operations. Now, of course, that, those operations would be dictated at the department level, at the expert level, that would not be dictated at the budget level, but rather by the experts. I'll hearken back to the police. We know we have been in a, in a constant overtime situation because of unfilled positions. Not the case with the fire. Does fire need new positions? I'll look to the fire chief to give us that guidance. That was not the guidance of this year. So I think, I think there is a feel for, is it permanent? Is it temporary? Is it emergency-driven? And then you make decisions based on that. So that, that would be the general approach of, of how we would deal with a, a change in circumstances.
Okay. And a follow. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A, a follow-up on that, so is, is our fire department budget driven by the need, or is it being driven by a dollar amount? So it was said earlier that there was a request to cut a million dollars based on what's available from the fire services fund. If, if a fire chief or the department looked at a hundred and fifty overtime shifts and wanted new people, and it didn't fit within the confines of that budget, is there a process for, for a request for an expansion of the budget to cover additional personnel?
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. I think, I think that's an excellent question. The fire department is built to serve our community, our city and our county. It has a budget to do that. It has a funding mechanism that's an enterprise fund, no different than our utilities have. And on a very regular basis, our utilities, if you have abnormal weather or unusual circumstances, they will do their best within a budget year to work within a constrained budget. That's not permanent. It's temporary. There's typically dollars that you can flex and manage to a particular budget. We knew immediately we would have a shortfall, all other things being equal last year, with the deferral of the fire service fee of about two and a half million dollars. So it is very customary for a department to say, hey, we've got to find ways to temporarily reduce the budget, but not permanently reduce the budget. That's what's being referred to. I can tell you, that, that didn't happen entirely. I'm not sure it was expected that it could, but best efforts had to be made. The fire department will end the year when we do the budget closeout short. There will be a shortfall in the fund. It didn't stop the department from operating, so it would be accounted for. And then this year, October first, you've already taken action, approved a fifteen percent increase, which restores the funding need. So do we take into account the budget and the budget constraints as we operate? Of course we do. Does it compromise service? No, it shouldn't. We look to the experts in the departments to make those decisions.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, and, and.
Chief is on.
Chief?
Yes.
Hey, Chief Gaines, a question earlier, and I'd, I'd love for you to comment on this, in terms of the need for additional overtime hours of your firefighters. Joey Davis, your union representative, indicated that you have an excessive amount of that. What is, what is the driving reason for that, Chief?
Well, there's a, a couple of things. First of all, I want to apologize for that. It's kind of hard moving around with a broken foot, and I had to take a break for a second, take my medication. But anyway, with that being said, there's, there's several things that are contributing to that. Obviously, when we stood up for the COVID vaccination site at station four, when we sent the USAR team down to Surfside, things like that contribute, and the fact that, you know, we're short-staffed, you know, people continue to retire out, and we try to keep up with that shortage as quickly as possible by running a hiring process once a year. We have since decided to make that twice a year. So there are several things that contribute to that. But as you said earlier, it does, it has done nothing to impact the level of service we provide.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, and, and I appreciate that explanation, and, and I understand that we've been able to maintain service. Thank you to the men and women who, who serve in the fire department, but I, I'm less concerned about whether we impacted service, of whether we impacted the lives of the people who work for us by asking them to continue to go the extra mile. So I, I know this may not be a question for adopting this budget right now, but I think it does speak to a conversation that we need to have of how we maintain employee morale, we make sure people continue to be taken care of, and we're not burning out our firefighters, and we want them to have long careers at the city of Tallahassee. So no further questions on the city budget, and I'd make the motion to approve the adjustments to the city's proposed budget.
Madam Attorney, you want to put us in the proper posture?
So, based on the discussion, approval of the city's tentative budget as stated in resolution twenty-one dash R dash twenty-six, but as adjusted by this discussion.
Excellent. Motion's been made by the Mayor Pro Tim.
Second.
Second to the motion. I'll second the motion. Any further discussion on the budget? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We are now on the downtown improvement authority proposed millage rate. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, you're our representative. Would you like to start off a discussion? I'll ask the, the city attorney to put you in the proper posture.
I think, well, first off, I want to thank Elizabeth Manuel, the director of the downtown improvement authority, for her, her, her leadership over the past couple of years. It's definitely headed in the direct, the right direction, and I'll move to approve the city's tentative.
Yeah.
Downtown. Downtown Improvement Authority's tentative millage.
Millage rate of one point one, one point zero mil as stated in resolution twenty-one dash R dash twenty-five, attachment A.
Second.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox, for the proposed downtown improvement authority millage rate. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, I'll come to you on the proposed budget of the downtown improvement authority, and Madam Attorney, would you like to put us in the proper posture?
Yes, sir. A motion for approval of the downtown improvement authority's tentative budget as stated in resolution number twenty-one dash R, R dash twenty-six, attachment B.
So moved.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the proposed downtown improvement authority budget signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Madam Attorney?
And finally, if there is a motion for approval of the negotiated healthcare rates with Capital Health Plan for FY twenty-two as required by the terms of the contract with CHP.
So moved.
Properly moved by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor of the mo, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Madam Attorney?
To summarize, the city commission has tentative, tentatively approved the millage rate for both the city and the DIA, and the expenditures and expenditures and obligations of the city of Tallahassee and the DIA for a fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-one, and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-two, designating the sources of revenue and appropriations. The title to the resolution in setting forth the city commission approvals are as follows. Resolution number twenty-one dash R dash twenty-five, a resolution establishing the millage rate for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty twenty-one, and ending September thirty, twenty twenty-two, as four point one mils for the city of Tallahassee and one mil for the downtown improvement authority, which is greater than the aggregate rollback rate of three point rate of 3.9867 by 3.3% and providing an effective date. And Resolution Number 20-R-26, a resolution adopting the operating and capital budgets for the city of Tallahassee and the operating budget for the Downtown Improvement Authority for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021, and ending September 30, 2022, designating the sources of revenue and set appropriations providing an effective date. A public hearing on the final budget will be held on Wednesday, September 22, 2021, at which time Resolution Number 20-R-25, setting the millage rate, and Resolution 21-R-26, setting the budget, will be, will be up for approval. Continued upon commission, action of resolutions and required budget summary advertisement will, will be adjusted for all issues resolved as a part of this agenda item, as, as well as other items approved during tonight's meeting, that may affect the fiscal year 2022 budget. This concludes any required action on this item. Once again, the final budget hearing is scheduled for Septum-, September 22, 2021.
Excellent. Madam Attorney, any further action on the budget?
No, Mayor.
Wonderful. Uh, Mr. Manager, anything else to come before us at the public hearing?
No, sir.
Excellent. We are now adjourned from the public hearing. I'm reconvening the city commission meeting. We are on item number 13.05. Mr. Manager-
Thank you.
Police Benevolent Association.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This, this item is the one that will precede your introduction of ordinance 1202. Uh, it involves, um, a recommended action to equalize the pension contribution for all of the members of TPD that are part of the bargaining units. You'll recall, they have two bargaining units, and, and the agreements were reached last year, or this year, excuse me, uh, over the course of the year. And it ultimately resulted in three different contribution rates for pension, depending upon your rank and tenure of service. The bargaining unit representing the sergeants and lieutenants is much smaller in comparison to the officers and investigators, and it's the one that we're, uh, recommending to clean up. We've worked directly with the unit representation. It affects materially a handful of, of those members, and it would take effect October 1st if approved. Ultimately, the contribution would be the same with this approval for all, all of those members. It would be necessary to implement an ordinance, which requires an introduction of ordinance in a public hearing at your next meeting. Uh, again, that would take place in item 1202. We're seeking your approval. This is a compensation component of the, uh, bargaining agreement, and it requires the approval of, of this body.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have no speakers on this item.
Excellent. Let's open it up for discussion. Comment, motions? Recommended option number one by staff. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just a question. So, so the two bargaining units bargain separately during, when, when, when we're doing negotiations, is that correct? Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and typically, once a bargaining unit negotiates, and we, we sign a contract, we, we, we don't go revisit it until the next session?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Wh- wh- why is this one being? Is it the intention to have all the bargaining units line up collectively? Because I know in the past, um, we, between police and fire, we get different agreements and different things happen, and the question always arise, is it fair? Who holds out the longest to get the best deal? And so my question is, is this, is this setting a precedent where we're, we're going to go back and whoever got the best deal, the other bargaining units are going to match it?
Mr. Mayor, may I? Commissioner, I think that's a good question. I don't think it does set the president, uh, precedent, and let me explain. Uh, it, this condition, if left in place, um, it leaves an odd treatment for officers. It very well could be, an officer and investigator that is ready for promotion to a sergeant during this bargaining period would change their pension contribution simply because of that promotion. So pension tends to be homogenous. It can be bargained separately. Most times, these are bargained in lockstep. And so what we know is that those officers that are in line to be sergeants in the future, uh, tend to be probably younger than the cut line for the pension contribution, and it could have a material impact, which would be discouraging from that promotion. So from a, from a, um, a management point of view, it's best to have an equalized, like we would for city employees, just generally speaking, everybody pays the same percentage. Of course, the, you know, however much you make matters, but the percentage is the same, and this would bring that in line. That is the most conventional treatment. It is true that they can bargain for different things. This particular element of the bargain tends to be homogenous and equalized across all of the bargaining units. And so that's why we make the recommendation to change it.
Mayor Protem?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Manager. In the future, I just think we should try to wrap this all up while we're bargaining. Um, I, I, I don't want to continue to do this. I'm not, I'm not against, um, the item. I think it's just cleaner to wrap up those conversations, um, when we're having them. So I'll move, um, staff recommendation for option one.
Been properly moved for staff recommendation for option number one. I will second it. Any other comments? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We are now on item 12.02, the introduction of ordinance. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.02 is the introduction of ordinance-
Madam Attorney, I need you to, you to move the microphone. I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Item number 12.02 is introduction of ordinance number 21-0-30, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, amending section 14-3.302 of the Code of General Ordinances of the city of Tallahassee relating to police officers' pension contributions, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. Recommended action is option one, introduce ordinance number 21-0-30, and set the first and only public hearing for September 22, 2021, at 5:00 PM in the city commission chambers at City Hall.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
We do not.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Attorney. The recommended option is the simple introduction. Is there a motion on the table to the-
Oh, move.
Probably moved by Commissioner Williams Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Ain't no further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five oh. We are back on item number 13.06. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, sir. Let me ask, um, Steve Schaefer to come forward, and he, and he does, as he does, um, as you all know, but I would like to congratulate him publicly. Steve was recently promoted to the position of General Manager of Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure. And Steve has been with the city more years than I'd like to say. Very experienced. He has been our city's engineer for a long time. He's worked in our former Public Works area. He's, he's been around, very skilled, and we certainly appreciate his service. And we're going to miss his predecessor much, but I will tell you, she gave Steve her full blessing, and I think, uh, according to her, trained him well. So we're going, we're going to count on that. But, uh, Steve's a great public servant, and we appreciate having him. Commissioners, this is our water and sewer master plan. It's a, um, 20-year plan, but done every five years. And this keeps us on track. It helps inform our capital improvement plan, our rate needs, and these kind of things. And so this is our five-year revisit of the plan. And I wanted, uh, Steve, just to do a real quick overview, if we could, of what, uh, what we consider and what's in it.
Thank you, and, uh, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, appointed officials. I appreciate this opportunity to be able to share this with you. It'll be a very quick presentation. Basically, I want to just kind of go through with you, um, why we master plan, the components of the master plan, and how it interacts with the development of our capital improvement plan. We master plan, we've got a very complex utility system, obviously. We have hundreds of miles of water mains and sewer mains. Uh, we've got over 100 pump stations. We've got 27 water production wells. We've got eight elevated storage tanks. And this, this master plan basically provides us a, a, a structured and organized way for us to be able to expand our systems. The, the master plan, um, is required by both the, the city-county comp plan and the city- Leon County water and sewer agreements. We're required to maintain a 20-year, uh, planning horizon, and as the manager said, update that every five years. And this basically supports, um, your commitment to maintain quality services, uh, and provide capacity for future growth, uh, within the urban service area. Uh, what's, what's included in the master plan? Obviously, we, we update our 20-year population projections. Uh, we have to incorporate, uh, information we have related to both new and known planned development. Uh, we evaluate and continue to evaluate unserved and target areas, uh, and we assess our existing infrastructure to determine how, uh, capable it is for, for dealing with the potential increased, uh, demands from those items above. Uh, in order to do that, we run the, 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 those, uh, volumes and, and the demands through our long-range, uh, water and sewer models. And then from there, we determine, uh, capacity improvements that may be needed, and operational improvements, uh, that we need to include in the master plan. So in the end, what comes out of that is development of a conceptual 20-year capital improvement plan. Uh, it's actually a, a portion of our total capital improvement plan, but it's, it's that part that deals with just our operational and capacity-related issues. To kind of get an idea of what kind of projects that we're talking about, um, that go into this master plan, uh, we've, we've got some samples of, of some of the products that are proposed. Um, one of the capacity projects in the water side, uh, is the, um, Northwest Water Production Well that we're going to be, uh, proposing to add to, um, replace well 26 that was taken offline a couple of years ago. And this will provide additional capacity needed for projected water demands, uh, in the northwest portion of our community. Uh, it kind of ties to this, which is more of an operational improvement, which is a elevated storage tank that we're proposing, uh, to go. Right now, I think the, the proposal's put it in the, uh, Northwest Park area. Um, and this is a million gallon, uh, million gallon capacity storage tank, uh, which improve, uh, increases system storage capacity, support growth, and maybe more importantly, to improve fire protection. Uh, another, uh, capacity improvement project on the sewer side, uh, is, uh, the wastewater pump station 120 upgrade and force main upgrade. This project will actually double the capacity, uh, the pumping capacity of the force main, and increase the flow by upgrading the, uh, the, uh, force main diameter to account for projected future flows. Uh, another capacity project is Ridge Road Wastewater Gravity Main. It's upgrading of that gravity main also to account for future flows. Um, and this is an operational, um, project. It's not as big as some of the other ones, but it's really important. It's a, uh, a new manifold, uh, on the force main, force main near, uh, Thomas P. Smith, uh, water reclamation facility. It allows for redundancy in our system, uh, allows us to buy, uh, improve our bypass operations so that we can do maintenance on one force main while not, uh, taking the system offline and impacting our customers. So from that, um, we've, we've got dozens of project, uh, proposed projects that come out of the master plan. And this kind of shows how we, we've summarized those. They're broken into five-year segments. And, um, from both the water and the sewer, and you can see over those five-year segments, uh, in the 20-year planning horizon, we're proposing over $40 million in investments on water utility, and over 70, um, over the sewer utility. So that's just a portion of our, uh, capital improvement plan. We, we take, um, those numbers, and we look specifically at the first five-year segment. And we include that as kind of a starting point of the capital improvement plan for our utility. So there's, there's the first line of what that would be. That's that first five years on the sewer side, broken up into individual years. And then from there, we add all the other components of our capital improvement plan to deal with aging infrastructure and relocations, and, and all the other things that go into our, managing our system. So you can see, um, while that master sewer plan improvement is important, there are maybe a relatively small part of our total investment. And, uh, I think, uh, the manager mentioned earlier, we've got, um, over $200 million worth of investments, um, planned over the, uh, five-year CIP. So we do the same thing with the, uh, the water, and you can see that first line is the, uh, the master plan components, and then, uh, we build on that to come up with the investment, uh, for our total capital improvement plan for the water side. So, um, after we've, um, developed that conceptual five-year CIP, uh, we, we review that against the strategic goals that, that you all have adopted for infrastructure investment. We also look at it, um, and review it in conjunction with the rate study that you heard about today. And through those, with, and, and, and obviously, this master plan supports the rate study, the rate supporting, uh, study supports this plan. So it's important that we were able to do that together. So, um, ultimately, we come up with a five-year recommended CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, and, um, the individual years will be approved through the capital budget process. Um, I, I just want to take a moment to, to say that, uh, the, the goals of that, um, of, of what we're doing are to provide a system that, that allows for growth, um, that, uh, protects our natural resources, uh, that's resilient. Uh, we want to make sure that, um, our, our folks expect during storms, after storms, that they flush a toilet, it still works. Um, they, they can turn on their faucets. So we're designing resiliency, we're designing, uh, redundancy into our system. And, uh, we're doing this all, you know, in manner we expect to be, and you expect to be, and our customers expect to be physically responsible. But I think that, uh, through the, the hard work of our team, and as evidenced from the recommendations that came out of the rate study, um, we're showing that we're, um, extremely well, um, positioned to be able to do that over the next, uh, 20 years. I'm more than happy to answer any questions. Do you have any?
Steve, thank you so much. And, uh, first of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
You're going to be fantastic. Number two, I want you to know, I was out with your wastewater collection team, uh, last week. Fantastic group, and, uh, they do absolutely amazing work, and really do appreciate it. And, um, yeah, it was, it was fascinating, learning about the sewer system and, and everything that they do. We, we appreciate it. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I think they said they, uh, had a vacancy, and they wanted you to join them full-time. Had a shirt for you and a hat and everything.
I'm going to keep the jokes out. All right, we'll get down to the, the, the lectern here. We've got, uh, Commissioner Williams Cox. Commissioner Porter.
Question, um, Steve, congratulations. Um, just, my, since we're talking about growth, and as we continue to grow, are there any plans in the future to have collection on the north side of town instead of everything flowing south? So, you, you know, this question came to me from, uh, a neighbor about that, because it just seemed, you know, from north Tallahassee to south Tallahassee is the flow. Is there any plan to grow, to have collection sites in other places besides down south?
We don't currently have, um, that, plans to increase, um, some of those treatment areas. Um, because of the capacity that has been built into the, the facility that we have right now, we know that it is, um, positioned to meet the, the needs of our community for at least the next 40 years. That is definitely something that's subject to be looked at, um, as we do the updates every five years, um, and it's something that'll, it'll be on our radar to use on the future.
You must imagine, the thought of that is, you talk about keeping the jokes out of it, that the thought of what happens from north Tallahassee to south Tallahassee is just, someone brought to my attention, it's just deplorable to think about. And I know that's the way it's been for, for years, but the city of Tallahassee is not high on the hill, and then it flows down like that. That was man-made. So I'm hoping that in the future, we will look at ways to co-, have collecting, collecting portions in other places of the city, other than just down south. You know, when I fly in, uh, I see, um, my airport director out back there, when I fly in, and I look down there, and I, and I've told my family, if something should happen, and my plane goes down, in that place, don't even try to save me. Just let me go on, because I would never be able to recover. So I'm just hoping that we will look at growing collection spots in other places as we continue to grow, and as we continue to, with population growth, business growth, waste grows as well. And so I'm hoping that we will look at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations again. I'm not sure if this question is for you or for our city manager. For the population projections, are we using those same population projections across our city departments? Like, are, for instance, are they looking at the same data? Because obviously, a lot of our departments are look, all of them are probably looking at population growth projections. I was just wondering, I mean, are we using a single source and applying those uniformly? Or is each department kind of getting at those numbers independently?
And first of all, I have to apologize. My hearing is much worse than, than my predecessors and the mass make it very much more difficult. So I know that your question related to population projections and how we obtain them, or, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I can answer it. And I know Steve knows the answer. In terms of the, the common thread, making sure we're using consistent data, we do. We take advantage of our planning department that sits between the city and the county. I wouldn't say that it's absolutely the same every time, but they're extraordinarily consistent in terms of population growth. And then each of the utilities or sectors that use that information have their own other growth factors as it relates to it. But we do use common, common data to, to project.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just add on to that, we compare that also. So we use those transportation analysis zones and we compare them to site-specific flows and we, and they match up very, very well. So we're finding that the, the traffic projections do well in projecting our population growth.
Thank you.
Any other questions, actions, motions? Commissioner Richardson, comments?
No, I'm good.
Anyone like to move recommended option number one?
I'll move to make the...
I would move option number one as recommended.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Porter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. We're on item number 13.07. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, sir. This item involves the future development of the, the utility facilities at Lake Bradford Road, that property that sits there at the corner of Famu Way and Lake Bradford. There are about 130 underground utilities and public infrastructure employees that work there, and they need to be relocated for the future development of that. The new facility needs to be completed no later than 2024. In order to meet those timelines, we're seeking to hire a architect and engineer to design the municipal complex that's out by Jackson Bluff to really maximize the use of that campus and accommodate the new employees. There was an RFQ that was conducted for those services, Architecture and Engineering Services, Ranking Committee of Staff. The staff has ranked BKJ Architecture Incorporated as a top-ranked firm. We are seeking your approval of that and authorizing negotiations with that top-ranked firm. To the extent those negotiations aren't successful, we would seek your approval then to move to the next highest-ranked firm. Veronica McCracken, our procurement manager, is here if you have any questions.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers on this item?
No, sir.
Excellent. First question, any problems with the RFP process? Any bid protests?
Let me ask our procurement manager to answer that, thank you.
Hi, good afternoon. We did not have any protests that were filed. We, the number-two vendor did raise an issue or concern about the process. Did not believe that the process itself was fair to them, but they did file a letter and raise that concern. They did, they did not file within the protest period, even though they had that option. But for whatever reason, did not follow through with that.
Okay, questions?
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Williams-Cox, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes 4-0 with Commissioner Porter out of chambers. We are on item number 13.08. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, madam procurement manager.
Thank you, sir. This item is the check-in on the Florida State University master plan. They file their campus master plan with us every five years. It is now time to provide comments on that master plan, and we're seeking your approval. To do so, your, the information is included in your agenda material. And Chris Ibro with our planning department is here to answer any questions you may have.
Excellent. Any public comment on this item, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir.
All right, let's open it up for discussions. Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Who's, who's taking the questions?
Chris.
Okay.
Chris Ibro, he's, he's in our planning department. He's been with us for a couple of years. He comes to us by way of Florida State University. And he interned with us, I'm told, so he must have liked it so much, he, he came back. So I, I like it. So Chris is here on this particular matter.
All right, Chris.
Well, this, this question is either for Chris or for the city manager, because I asked this in briefing about the Famu master plan. And if we know that, because I know that these master plans come before us, and I just want to find out what's the status of the Famu master plan.
I'm currently not working on the Famu master plan. I would defer that to Artie White.
He knew that, that's why he moved in closer.
There you go, Mr. White, thanks for joining us.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. When the time comes for Famu to submit their master plan, we'll do the same process. It's a statutory-driven process, would have 90 days to review it and provide comments. That clock has not started, but we're, have good relationship with both universities. And at the right time, we'll, we'll do that and we'll follow the same process and bring those comments to you.
Okay, well, that was my question. When is the right time? When, when does that occur? And I know you say the clock has not started, but is there a projected time?
I don't have that date at the top of my head. I believe it's coming up in the near future, maybe within the next couple of months to the next one year. But I don't have the specific date at this moment.
Okay, but you'll get, you'll, you'll get that to us?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, come on back up here. Now, you're in a unique position, I understand, because you came from Florida State and you worked on this on that side, and now you're with us, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's great. So give us some broad strokes. What do you think about the master plan, positive impacts, any major alarm bells going off? You know this better than anybody on both sides, so talk to us.
Well, currently, the master plan, they have decided to create a few districts. One of them is the arena district, one of the highlights of the area. They are going to be relocating the College of Business to that area, also proposing to build a hotel for the area as well. And also focusing on innovation district or park development in the southwest campus area, a few new construction projects in that area, too. Overall, a very good plan. And we also do have representatives, representatives from FSU that have joined us from WebEx. If there's more specific details you guys like to add.
Excellent, man, thank you so much. Any, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question. Generally speaking, I know that ultimately, the campus development agreement requires city commission approval. In your experience of the comments that we made on the plan that we're submitting, like, how many of those generally get addressed? Is it the kind of thing where they go by one and address each comment, or can they just reject it outright?
I would defer to Artie White on the development agreement process. He would have a little bit more to say about that.
Thank you.
Mr. White.
Good evening, Commissioner. We have been in continual conversation with Florida State University, so none of the comments will come to a surprise, come as a surprise to them. So I anticipate that they will most likely accept all of the comments and make the adjustments accordingly. Our comments were fairly minimal on this, to be honest.
Okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no further comment, Commissioner Williams-Cox.
One, one other question. Is there a, a diagram or picture that shows all Florida State's boundaries? It's, it's just a comprehensive overall picture of, when we talk about the master plan, where it actually begins and ends?
We do have a couple of maps up that will show the main campus right here and then the southwest campus over here. Is that's what you're referring to?
Commissioner, we, there is a GIS overlay. I'll make sure we send it to all of y'all that, that denotes, and it's not necessarily contiguous, right? So you'll find as it kind of breaks apart when it hits the edges of campus. We'll, we'll make sure we send that to you.
Okay, that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Is that a motion for approval? Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Don't move.
Staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Porter. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Chris, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, do we have any other items come before the city commission right now?
No, sir.
All righty, we are on un-agenda business speakers. Mr. Clerk, how many speakers do we have this evening?
I believe we have eight, Mayor.
All right, let's start.
The, the first is Joseph Batavia. And I, okay, I thought I saw him, he's there in the back. So he'll be our first speaker, and then Shelby Green.
Great. Thank you for joining us, Joseph, good to see you.
Again.
Three minutes, please, sir, your name and address for the record.
Happy Labor Day to y'all.
Happy Labor Day.
I told you back in the day, I represent 50 states like we all do. But right now, I'm talking about Florida. We have 67 counties. There is a product that came out, it's called Burner Nation. It's been out for three years. The problem is, when you're complying to the law, the other party do not know the statute. That's a big problem because, let's say, we're in a large gathering. Someone makes a phone call while you're walking. Second Amendment for the Constitution allows certain people. But then there's the other category with disabled people that aren't allowed to have Second Amendment because Florida has the Baycrack Law because of professionals think they know what they know, but they don't know. It is really interfering to protect the community. Now, when city, I want to bring, show you guys this. This US Marshals uses it nationwide throughout the 50 states. It went through the federal department. It's not a gun. It's a non-lethal projectile, purple ball, and CO2 tear gas for 18-year-olds to senior citizens. We're trying to prevent death, we're trying to prevent safety. Mr. Mayor, if I didn't know you as a mayor, but I was a cop, and I came up to you, and let me ask you this, any of you guys have a CCW?
A what?
A what?
A CCW, concealed carrying permit.
No, I don't.
Nobody carries a gun here.
I don't want to announce that.
I'm just, okay, if you guys do, awesome. But there's one statute for Florida. 7901, it's called a device. What does that look like to you from, without me telling you anything?
Joseph, that looks like a handgun.
You're correct. But the problem is, people don't understand. It's been out for three years. What is this town, number-one town of this area? What do we have of the, not the population, of the citizens, of the other population, college students? We have all types of students coming from different states. Our Florida statute lets us residents know the statute. But if I was coming from Wisconsin, or Texas, or New York, you get what I'm trying to say?
I have about 30 seconds.
Long story short, we need to come approach. If you ask me to talk to you, please talk to us. Don't go hostile. And that's all I got to say. I just want people to have safety and awareness because we all look each other's back. Like, I represent this flag, I represent the Florida flag, too. This is my home, but I want everybody to go home. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph, appreciate it. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Is Shelby Green.
Thanks for joining us, your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, board. My name is Shelby Green and my address is 519 Ingleside Avenue. As I'm sure you're all aware, for the past few months, I've been canvassing the Providence neighborhood to distribute news about the expired city utility moratorium and make residents aware of the local and state programs for utility assistance. Sometimes I'll go one step further by helping residents communicate with the city to set up a payment plan or get their lights turned back on after being disconnected. Last Wednesday, a resident's lights were disconnected due to non-payment. She was passed to $192.76 after our Florida partially covered her pass-to amount. Once she went down to the office and asked to set up a payment plan to turn her lights back on, she was denied. Instead, she was required to pay $100 to restore utility service and pay the remaining $92.76 by the end of the week or be disconnected again. That experience was frustrating for the both of us because we did not know there wasn't only an 18-day grace period, and she was denied from establishing a payment plan because she did not contact the city prior to disconnection. At first, we were told the entire pass-to amount had to be paid and then only $100. It felt like we were negotiating at a pawn shop. From April 27th, when the utility moratorium ended, until August 6th, the city performed 14,443 disconnections. Tens of thousands of households have been disconnected where a majority live in marginalized communities and are already struggling to balance which bills to pay. This data came directly from the city clerk's office through public records requests. This number is only expected to rise with the ending of unemployment and increased cases of COVID-19. We're wondering when the upward trend will end. And some items I identified to reduce disconnections are three things, and it'd be very helpful if the city did do them. One is to widely communicate programs like our Florida. Only 2% have been distributed. We're still not seeing it published online or advertised on city communications or thin city facilities. We believe it should be advertised on city buses, on the city utility payment portal online, and also on the city utility call line. The second thing is extending the grace period from 18 days to 30 days to allow residents' applications to be processed by our Florida or the CAAC light heat program. It's also disheartening to see residents get disconnected after making an aggressive effort to bring their account current after not paying for almost a year.
You're at almost three minutes.
Okay. And the last thing is creating an FAQ website for utility disconnections. When I asked a representative where to find that 18-day grace period, he said it wasn't posted online or formalized in writing. So it'd be good to know how much needs to be paid before the lights get turned off and not be given arbitrary number.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Your time has expired.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next is Delilah Pierre, and then Richard DeRabi.
Thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name's Delilah. My address is 1918 Bondi Drive. I wasn't exactly sure how the agenda system works, so I meant to speak specifically on the people's budget issue during the people's budget section, well, city budget issue during the city budget section. But I did kind of like want to talk and advocate for us to come with some kind of like changes to our city budget and how the money is allocated there, you know? If you talk about utilities in Tallahassee, if you talk about the major lack of ability of people to pay their utilities, people who are losing their lights, people who don't have access to housing right now, people who don't have access to affordable healthcare right now, you see that most of our city's budget continues to go into these same places that don't seem to reduce crime or poverty or social inequality in Tallahassee. The Tallahassee Police Department makes up one-third of our city's budget, about $59 million. And if I'm correct, I could be wrong, I believe they're adding $3 million to their budget. So it's more around 61 million, 62 million. And I just think that this money isn't being properly apportioned, especially if they can't even find the money to pay for their civilian forensics unit. If they can't find the money to fund those people correctly, if the city can't find the money to make sure that firefighters aren't working 48, 72, 96-hour shifts at a time, I think that means that our budget is horribly misproportioned. So I say we need a change to our city budget. Obviously, y'all know I'm a representative of the Tallahassee Community Action Committee. I hope y'all look at our people's budget and look at the money we reapportion from the police department to the rest of the city. We want more affordable housing in the city. We want the eviction moratoriums and other things in the city to be extended. We think there are a lot of vacancies in the city that could be filled with houseless people, with people who are suffering right now, who due to the COVID-19 pandemic and due to unemployment, don't have the opportunity or access to defend their own needs or protect themselves. We think there needs to be a change in the infrastructure and utility plans. I know there's an infrastructure plan going on on Tennessee Street, but there are still sidewalks in black and brown neighborhoods in Tallahassee where they don't even have an opposing sidewalk, don't have a bike lane, don't have the kind of infrastructure that white or wealthier areas in the city have. We see FSU extending itself and the FSU Convention Center being allowed by Blueprint and other organizations in our city, but we don't really see that same kind of funding and access going into any kind of program to change the way that our community interacts with police officers, any kind of external investigation into the way protesters are treated, into the way activists are treated by our city. So I think, you know, thinking about things such as giving more money to black and brown-owned business in our city, using the mileage rate, I'm going to specifically making that lower for disproportionately marginalized people in our city, for people who have less access for people who have less access in our city.
You have fifteen seconds left.
Decriminalizing marijuana, so the incident that happened with Rahim Reader doesn't happen again. Those are all concrete goals we can try to reach and money that we could apportion away from maybe some sections of our budget that don't need it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Richard Deraby, followed by Harry James. Mayor, if Mr. Deraby sticks to the stated issue, I recommend additional time. It says staff compliments. We'll give him as much time as he needs.
I appreciate it. Richard Deraby, eight oh-five North Gadsden. They are two positive things I just wanted to come bring to you. I watch a lot of these meetings work-related. I work with Morabas Consulting. We do land development consulting. I also watch a lot of these just personally, kind of on my own volition, as crazy as that sounds, just to stay aware. But you all don't get enough kudos. It starts at the top. Honestly, you make very tough decisions, and I want to compliment you specifically on some recent pro-growth, pro-smart growth, pro-smart redevelopment decisions you have made as a board, which we appreciate in the community. And I'm speaking as a citizen, not necessarily from work, but, you know, Project Mango, the Valencia, and the decision earlier today. Just want to compliment those and kind of the dynamic of those kinds of decisions you make. They're very important to the citizens and to the business community, so I want to compliment that. Secondly, just want to compliment staff from the growth management side on the engagement they're doing for what's called the Glitch Ordinance. It's a process they're working out. This follows neighborhood compatibility that went on in the spring. I came in and spoke on that, if you may recall. Now, we're working through the Glitch Ordinance and through the leadership, starting with our city manager and running down through Assistant Manager Tedder, all the way down through Karen Jumminville, Bill Pavle, John Reddick, and I'm sure many other staffers there working at Growth Management. They're bringing together neighborhood groups and the business community to make specific code changes that'll make our code more efficient, and it'll benefit everyone holistically. So it's a very tough process. If you can imagine bringing parties from opposing sides of many issues and finding that common ground. So we're engaged in that, and I just want to compliment staff for taking that forward and getting us to these points. I know we have more steps ahead. There's even another one coming up, I believe, after we get through the Glitch Ordinance this fall. So just want to compliment everybody and thank you all for your support that trickles down the chain. Thank you.
Our next speaker.
Next is Harry James, and then Jason Hollister.
James? James? Our next speaker.
Next speaker then is Jason Hollister.
Hollister? Good to see you, sir. Thank you for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Jason Hollister, thirty-two forty-five Addison Lane. Just want to thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. I serve on the Access Advisory Council with the Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce. Wanted to bring your attention today to a project that we've been working on called the Access to Reading Project. This initiative is an effort to make books more accessible to students in under-resourced areas in our city by having the business community sponsor these libraries to build them, to fill them with books, and to place them, install them in strategic locations. The project came out of a desire to see every child in our community flourish, no matter what their zip code is and no matter what their socioeconomic status is. One particular focus of this project is to find books that are culturally relevant. We understand that an integral aspect of literacy for kids is representation. An opportunity to see themselves in the stories they're reading. It's the magic of reading, right? That you get to transport yourself into the book that you're reading. But this is difficult for those that look at the pages and do not see themselves or those from their community. So we've partnered with Dr. Lakeisha Johnson with the Florida Center for Reading Research to help us source diverse books for the demographic of the areas where the libraries will be placed. In addition, we have teamed up with NIMs Middle School to paint our first library that's located at the Tallavilla Apartments on Magnolia. We hope to continue our partnership with Title I schools to either build the boxes, to decorate the boxes, or to have them on the school property. We've also spoke to, spoken to Brunner and April Knight and asked for their help engaging the interests of the administrators in other Title I elementary schools. Currently, we have one box that is installed, and the second box that is to be placed in the Fort Braden community this month. We four more library boxes that have been sponsored, and we're currently trying to identify the locations for where they would go. It's our desire as young professionals in this city to follow the lead of our Chamber Executive Board and effect change in areas of early education. We believe that literacy is that tide that will raise all ships and a component that will help all the kids in Tallahassee flourish. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker, Philip Browning. And then I believe Stanley Sims will be our last speaker.
Browning, thank you so much for joining us. Your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Philip Browning, eight zero four five Tennyson Drive. I'm originally from Atlanta, Georgia, but moved down to Tallahassee in two thousand and five. Proud alumni of Florida State. Met my wife while in college here and just fell in love with Tallahassee. Fell in love with the city, everything it had to offer, and have decided to raise my family here. This year, during the pandemic, I've had the honor of serving as the Chair of Access Tallahassee, which is, as my cohort said, the Young Professional Affiliate Program of the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce. Our membership is comprised of over three hundred and fifty young professionals who are eager to make an impact both professionally and improve the community we live in. Access members meet monthly to network and collaborate on topics ranging from best business practices to community engagement. During the pandemic, our Access Council represented here today worked together to identify ways that we could make the biggest impacts in our community. Together, we selected two main initiatives to undertake that we felt would best move our community forward. The first was constructing, installing, and securing sponsors for little free libraries across the city with the objective of placing a little, placing a library at every one, every Title I school in Leon County and significantly impacting our community's access to books. The second initiative is the creation of a mentorship program, pairing Access members to both business and community leaders in an effort to collaborate one-on-one. Its goal is to help emerging young leaders ensure that Tallahassee is a place with a diverse and strong regional economy where businesses succeed and the community prospers. Through our research, we have seen programs like this succeed across the state and country in retaining young professional talent and fostering creative community ties that help these regions flourish. This is one of many examples of the chamber and business community working for the betterment of our Tallahassee community. Being pro-business means being pro-jobs, pro-economic growth, pro-philanthropy, pro-education, pro-volunteering, pro-leadership, and so much more. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today.
Hey, thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Stanley Sims. And Mayor, that's the last speaker we have.
Great. Mr. Sims, your name and address for the record, please.
Go out on a good note. My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at thirteen-twenty Avondale Way. On April twenty-eighth, that's what my mom said. It's somehow my driving license. It says April twenty-ninth, nineteen sixty-six. I was born on State Road Twelve in Havana, Florida. My mama graduated from Carroll High School. My grandmama moved here because we, we picked tobacco. In that day, Diane, you know what I'm talking about. We looped back on Mr. Tutson's farm. My mom moved from Havana to Alberta Street off of Lake Bradford Row. I couldn't, she couldn't find daycare for me over there. My mama was working as a waitress, going to Lively, trying to make it. Mr. Dan Kleiman gave my mama a job right across the street there, where the Personnel Office used to be. I don't care if you don't think I love Tallahassee. But I love it. And I love it so much that I'm willing to bear my burdens in the heat of the day. But my son shouldn't have to bear them. I was sitting at trial to learn how to maneuver around you. He kicked me out this building, and Curtis asked them to let me back in. He punished my son because he had to control me.
You got about twenty seconds.
But there ain't nothing you can do to control this. I'm going to stand on the truth. They may bury their heads in the sand, but you will not bury me in the sand. As long as you punish my son, this is personal.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Your time is up. We appreciate it.
My time is up when the Lord calls my name.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. We appreciate it. Our next speaker.
What part you appreciate?
Mayor, we have no further speakers tonight.
Okay, sounds great. We are on commission time. I'll go ahead and start it off. We'll just go straight down the, straight down. First of all, so we've been on recess, and coming back from recess, we are in the middle of hurricane season right now. And we concentrate so much on preparation. I do want to give a shout-out to the great team that does emergency management at the City of Tallahassee and everyone in every department that when there is a named storm in the Gulf of Mexico, we have to spring into action. And we're at the height of that season. You know, we talked about fire tonight. We talked about the men and women handle wastewater, all of our utilities. You know, it touches every aspect of the city. And I don't think that we could say enough how much we appreciate what they're doing. I know we've got utility line crews that are probably still over in Louisiana, helping out over there. And, yeah, we really do appreciate them. Number two, I want to say thanks to the budget team. Robert, you and your team are absolutely fantastic. One of the best in the nation as a department. It's not lost on me that I believe this is the first year that we've crossed over the billion-dollar mark in our city budget. And it is an awesome responsibility that the five of us share. But you all do an amazing job bringing forth the budget as a council management, former government. Mr. Manager, we certainly do appreciate it. Thank you. I always never take it for granted and always are very thankful when we get to passing a balanced budget, which is by law our greatest responsibility as a municipal government. So thank you so much for you and the entire team for everything that y'all do as well. Madam Attorney, would love to get an update at the next meeting on House Bill One. So there's been a lot of activities over the past couple of months, legal activities in regards to the challenges of what the legislature passed and what the governor signed. Would love to know where we are on the federal level with the challenge, where we are on the state level with the challenge. I am interested in knowing what municipalities have stepped up to the plate to get involved with the legal challenges, what aspects of the challenges. If the City of Tallahassee decided to go down this route and join other municipalities in the legal challenge of HB One, what does that look like? What would the cost be associated? Hey, give us a clear picture. What are the chances of survival in a legal fight? In your best recommendation moving forward. But I'm asking for one of my colleagues to make that motion on my behalf to bring back an agenda item to us at the next meeting.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
And I'll second it.
Commissioner, and then we'll go to discussion in just a second. So we've got a motion by Commissioner Richardson and a second by Commissioner Williams Cox. Commissioner Richardson for comment, and Commissioner Williams Cox and Commissioner Porter.
On the motion?
Yeah. You have any additional comments?
No, I mean, this, it's an issue certainly that has been brought, I think, to all of our attention at one point or another. And there are some concerns with it, and I know that it's being proposed to be challenged in the courts. And I think it certainly is appropriate that we take a look at how we might be involved in that process to protect our citizens, especially those that are exercising their constitutional right to free speech and assembly.
Agreed. Any other, any other, Commissioner Williams Cox and Commissioner Porter.
I also, I second this motion. I join with Commissioner Richardson because I too have been known to be a peaceful protester. But I also would be interested in, I know that there's someone out there who's willing to foot the bill, I'm being told. So that gives me even more reason to want to be a part because that means that somebody else is going to bear the cost of it. We need to know more about who that is and what that is because, you know, we don't need some entity that we are not familiar or friendly with being the ones who's going to do that. But we do need to find out who's out there to do it. And I do know that last I spoke with someone from the Southern Poverty Law Group.
Terry Boy.
Yeah, Miramar and Gainesville. And then there are twenty others that are reviewing. And in Tallahassee, we're the capital city. We leave wherever we go. So I definitely don't want to be, you know, left behind unless there is very good reason to be left behind. And I trust the legal and sound advice of our city attorney and her staff. They'll make sure that we're covered and protected. So in all of those things that are included in there, there's some budgetary things that are, we need to peel it apart and see what we can wrap our arms around.
Agreed. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say I'll support the motion. I was going to bring this up myself. I definitely would be supportive of a legal challenge. I think the attacks on home rule are totally out of control, and, you know, sometimes the courts are our last resort, and I look forward to that, to hear more about it.
Madam Attorney, are you clear on the direction of the motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'm clear on the direction.
Excellent. All right. See, no further comment. Motion was made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Williams Cox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. Over the recess, the Fire Department brought a very interesting idea to my attention that I would love to see us pursue. It's dealing with what's called the Safe Haven Baby Box. And basically, we have a program when
I've heard of it.
A, where a baby can safely be dropped off. This takes it to the next level at our fire departments with infrastructure. It's actually at no cost to the fire department. That's my understanding. Anyway, I am interested in the Fire Department formally bringing this item through the city manager to the City Commission for discussion and hopefully for some action, be able to move forward. I think it's a great program. I don't even know if I can answer all your questions right now, except for it takes the, again, the practice that we have of being able to drop a baby off safely at a fire station to the next level of comfort and care with some infrastructure. In particular, I think there's a great opportunity when we build the new Lake Bradford Fire Station to incorporate whatever it is, and it would come for discussion, into the fire station, be able to handle it. Anyway, so what I'm asking for is for an item to come back to the City Commission by way of the city manager and the Fire Department to be able to better explain the program and what they're interested in doing here in Tallahassee. Commissioner Porter.
So moved.
Okay, properly moved by Commissioner Porter. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Williams Cox, any further comment?
I'd like to make sure that we look at not just a fire station, but as many as possible because I would hate for someone to have to drive all the way to Lake Bradford or catch the bus to Lake Bradford, but as many as possible. And I'd also like to invite Faith Base to partner or be a part of this because I've seen it in other places on television where you can take a baby to church and leave the baby there safely. So maybe an opportunity to partner with Faith Base.
Excellent. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five-zero. Mr. Steve Schaefer, once again, congratulations on the promotion. Yeah, you do amazing work with the city, and we appreciate it. It's well-deserved, and I know under your leadership, we'll just keep moving forward. Yeah, you do amazing work with the city and we appreciate it. It's well deserved and I know under your leadership, we'll just keep moving forward. Finally.
He's got tough heels to fill, Mr. Mayor.
That is true. That is true. Finally, I know Elizabeth Manuel is here and, and you know what? Y'all did a tremendous job over the course of the summer and during the recess, uh, with everything going on in downtown Tallahassee. It has been brought to my attention that Alan Thompson, who I commonly refer to as the mayor of downtown, um, is retiring, uh, from the Improvement Authority. And so I just wanted to provide, uh, some comments and say, job well done. Alan is absolutely fantastic. He's been an incredible addition to the Downtown Improvement Authority. I don't know if there is anyone besides Elizabeth that actually promotes downtown, um, in such a positive manner and has done so year in and year out for many decades. And so Alan, on behalf of the city, thank you so much for all your service and for everything that you've done. And if you see Alan, give him a pat on the back and, uh, tell him congratulations.
And tip your hat.
Tip your hat. That's right. And finally, folks, as the mayor of Tallahassee, I am asking everybody that is listening, get your vaccination. Uh, we are at a point where we can truly make positive strides in this community if you get your vaccination. Please, get your vaccination. With that, I am done with my comments. Mayor Pro Tem, we'll just go straight down the line. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I have, uh, three, um, topics to bring up. Um, the first one, I, I asked the, the city manager and he, he had, uh, Ms. Ojatayo do some work on looking at, um, if we could provide workforce housing, but look at things, keeping our public works employees, our teachers, our first responders, um, close to where they work and being able, um, to provide incentives and those sorts of things. And then he followed up with some programs, I think Delray Beach did, and, um, Madam Attorney, um, had an opinion where it was somewhat open and we would have to look at other cities to see what would be permissible to move down this path. Um, so I, I'm, I'm asking for an item to come back to just kind of recap what the city manager sent me and allow the attorney to look at, um, what, what would be legal if we, we went down trying to target, um, this, these specific workforce and the developments. And I'll make a motion to have that come back as an item.
Motion on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussions? Any none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, passes unanimously. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the, the second, um, issue I want to raise is, um, looking at how we sell, um, public land. I, 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 I know, um, earlier it was discussed that, you know, with the real estate market heating up, we might get, um, additional offers on, on things that are open. I, I strongly believe, um, we don't have to delay the process for somebody interested because oftentimes, um, when people are interested, um, such as the sale today and the Valencia group, we, they first contacted the city six months ago, nine months ago, and you know, it's my belief, that's the time to go ahead and initiate the RFP in the, in a competitive process. So there's plenty of time while they're doing due diligence, um, for staff to prepare an item and, and, and really bid it out. Because when we look at the recent, um, land sales, the way things are, have been presented, have been, to me, um, drastically different. When we purchased or sold the, um, Chevron John's property, um, it was really just a one week's notice, um, to the public and we approved that, that day. Um, the issue that came before the commission earlier today that it was not a part of, um, that required an additional meeting, um, for it to come back and allow for, um, more, um, public input. The other thing that stuck out to me was the drastic difference in the offers. Um, on Gaines Street, both properties are on Gaines Street. One commanded a $4 million offer for one acre. The other commanded $8 million for five acres. I, I, I think we have to look at, when we have complete city blocks, there's value there. And I think when people are looking, it's so valuable that somebody came today and said, that one acre is worth $4 million because I'm ready to go and build it. So I think that's the point of the competitive process because the value of real estate is what somebody's willing to pay for it. That's, 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 that's the golden rule, um, of real estate. And unless we start bidding things out, um, we'll never know. And then just. We have policies, we have what's legal, but then there's also best practices. When we look at competitive bids, there's a purpose for them. And I, I was trying to wrap my thoughts around, why do we bid things out? Why do we do competitive bids? So I do what I always do and I just Google that question. Why do we do competitive bids? And the first thing that popped up was competitive bids are a means of preventing political graft and corruption because the public nature of the process discourages favoritism and fraud. So this doesn't mean that anytime public land sale is sold, that there's some sort of corruption involved with it. But it is showing that when you have a strict best practice of competitive bids, that it gives the public confidence that there's, there's nothing wrong and it discourages bad behavior. We, we can't say who will come, we can't speak for those who came before us and we can't speak for those who come after us. But what we can do is set policy to put our city on the best foot, um, moving forward. Um, so secondly, like all of you, I've been following the local public corruption trial, listening to the FBI tapes, listening or reading the text messages that were sent out. And I was appalled. I was frankly, got pretty angry, uh, rea- reading some of what, what I heard. But I think we have to be clear that we can't let these actions define where our city is going to go in the future. We are in control of our own destiny and putting our be- best foot forward. So, um, I, on October 6th, I'm going to host a, a public town hall. We've been soliciting feedback from the public, um, policy recommendations. I've made some recommendations, so we'll show, I'll send out. And I just want to really invite the entire public, the entire community to get involved, help us come up with ideas so we can all move forward as one city in a, in an ethical direction that we can all be proud, um, to call home. So I know we've all been anxiously waiting for the sentencing. Um, we're finally getting there after many, many COVID delays. Uh, to, to really put this chapter of Tallahassee history behind us. I look forward, um, to those conversations later this fall. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of announcements or reminders. The, uh, Frenchtown Rising, the first one for the 2021 football season occurs this Friday on McComb Street in Frenchtown. And I'm looking in my phone on the Frenchtown Heritage Festival.
On the 18th, I think.
I believe it's the, I believe you're correct. The Frenchtown Heritage Festival will be on September 18th, Saturday, September 18th. Uh, it's free and open to the public. Both of these events are. And both of these events have been funded through the community, or partially funded through the Community Redevelopment Agency. So to encourage, uh, all of us, uh, in particular, but certainly the community to be involved in those two, uh, events. Be safe, wear a mask, be cautious, uh, make sure that you have your vaccination before you attend. Uh, the other item that I had, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor and, and Commissioners, we all know that recently, well, maybe not recently, but over the years, since the passage of Roe v. Wade, protecting a woman's right to choose. Uh, there have been assaults, uh, on that law. Uh, and here in particular, we've seen several states, Texas in particular, most recently, passed a law pretty much eliminating all abortions, uh, in the state of Texas. Other states, including Florida, their legislative bodies have, uh, over the years chipped away at a woman's right to choose and her reproductive health and decisions about her reproductive health. Um, and so we, we see a concerted effort, uh, on the part of, uh, groups, organizations, legislators, legislatures, uh, now to roll back all of the, uh, rights that women have to make choices about their own bodies and their reproductive health. That's likely to, uh, continue, I won't say start, but continue here in Florida. It's been chipped away at. Uh, I have read and heard that there are legislators in the Florida Legislature that are considering a Texas-style, uh, anti-abortion bill. Uh, and so there are groups then throughout the country, throughout the state of Florida. Uh, I was approached by, uh, Barbara Devane, who is representing a number of, uh, organizations that are coming together and asking local, uh, political bodies, uh, city county, city and cap- city and city commissions and councils and county commissions to take a stand, uh, on behalf of women and their reproductive rights. And so what I would ask, uh, Mr. Mayor, is that our attorney draft a resolution that would come back to us for consideration, uh, indicating our position on a woman's right to choose and asking the legislature to protect that right and not to consider, uh, and/or pass, uh, legislation that would further erode a woman's right to determine, uh, what's in her best interest with respect to a pregnancy and her, uh, healthcare. And so I would ask the attorney, I know we have been working on that, uh, and I think the, the attorney may have a draft prepared for us that, uh, that, uh, some of the groups that are working on this are, are, um, considering. And so hopefully by the time we meet again, we'll have something that we can consider. As a commission, this is representing the mayor and city commission, not the city of Tallahassee, but our governing body, uh, and our position on this issue.
Yeah, motion on the table made by Commissioner Richardson for a, uh, resolution to come back at the next city commission meeting, uh, specifically dealing with our position as the elected body of the city of Tallahassee for women's reproductive rights in light of all the action that's been taken.
Yes.
On the state and federal level. The motion's been made by Commissioner Richardson. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that motion and, uh, look at, uh, uh, attorney and, um, knowing that she will put together what is needed.
Yes, yes.
Seconded by Commissioner Diane Williams Cox.
Aye.
Any further comment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Commissioner Richardson, you have a fourth?
Uh, that was all I had.
Great. Commissioner Williams Cox?
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, colleagues. I wanted to update you on the South Side Action Plan. Uh, we may have been on hiatus, but I've kept a keen eye on what's, what we got going on on the South Side. Uh, currently, the team is focused on evaluating survey responses over, uh, 19 events and, um, surveys. There have been, uh, 571 responses. They're evaluating the existing plans, analyzing the data and, um, and, and what's found in those, uh, existing policies and drafting, uh, the community enhancements, strategies and concepts for the South Side. So this is moving into the third phase of the community engagement strategy and analyzing, uh, this information. And just in case, uh, you did not know, um, there were, of these 571 responses, we've had 68% of the responses came from folks who live on the South Side. Um, 19% of them were employed on the South Side. And, uh, 13% of them are ten church on the South Side. And 10% own businesses on the South Side. So, um, wanted to share that with you. And 22% are renters, 48% are owners, and 24% of, uh, do neither. So that's the South, South, South Side Action Plan. We're looking forward to continuing to move, um, in a positive direction on having, um, some things changed for the good on the South Side. There, there will be a street renaming on Friday. And you're all invited. It's, uh, Friday morning at 8:30 at the Family Welcome Center. Um, Gamble Street is gonna be renamed Robert and Trudy Perkins Way. Uh, for those of you who may, uh, may not be familiar with the story, the, um, the Perkins are, uh, a civil rights power couple who are responsible for some actions, um, that have resulted in having a deputy city manager, um, Cynthia Barber, myself and others, um, um, not only black females, but blacks in higher ranking positions because that wasn't always the case, uh, with our city. So come out and, and celebrate with us, um, as we give honor where honor is due. Uh, some of you may know, uh, Ms. Jackie Perkins. These were her parents. And, um, Fri- the reason we're doing it on Friday is because it would have been their 75th wedding anniversary. And so, uh, they're both deceased, but, um, Jackie and another brother are the only surviving children and, uh, host of family and friends. So, uh, I want to thank the city of Tallahassee, um, County. Want to thank, um, the, uh, the committee, the, the naming committee and all of those folks will be acknowledged. I want to thank, uh, Allison Ferris and the communication staff. We've been working diligently and, and fam you, we've been working in tandem to make this happen. So, um, come out on Friday and, and experience it. There was, um, the, um, chamber, there were some folks in the chamber who talked about donating books to different reading programs, access to reading. There, the local television stations are also doing book drives. And, uh, I, I would, would recommend and hope that we, at the city of Tallahassee, employees and friends and family, we will all participate in donating, making donations to get books in not only, uh, Title I schools, but in schools that are, uh, underfunded, underserved and underprivileged. That's probably Title I schools, but, um, we want to make sure that our li- our little ones get that opportunity to read. It's important to me, growing up in Quincy, we didn't have cable television way back then in the 60s and early 70s. And three channels, black and white, the only way I could travel was by reading. And so I know they have a lot of other distractions, but they need to, children need to know how to read and be able to learn, uh, from their reading. So I'm encouraging all of us to contribute to books for, um, individuals, for, for our young people. And one of the folks that they mentioned that they're partnering with is Dr. Lakeisha Johnson. I happen to know her personally. And, um, she is, um, doing a tremendous job. She has a five-year-old who is an author. Her five-year-old has written at least two or three books. So when you invest in children, it comes back to you. So I'm encouraging all of us to, to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few things. Um, one was I have an update about the community ID programs that we had asked to come back. And then, um, you know, we were really looking, I had been working with staff to find, as we discussed here, just sort of find a host for that program since we, it would not be the city. So, um, Legal Aid has been in touch with, um, Mr. Doolin and the city manager about, um, their interest in serving as the host for a community ID program. Um, and I'll remind you just because it's been a little bit, um, since we last spoke about this, community ID would be a, an ID in this case that would be issued by Legal Aid, um, and then would be recognized by the city, um, for certain services. So it does not give you the right to drive. It does not give you the right to fly. Um, it's to access basic social services that a person already qualifies for, but not having a proof of identification. Um, and there are several levels of verification for this. Um, I wanted to say too, that, um, and, and one reason that a lot of places are passing this since we last met, I believe it's been passed in Broward, Miami-Dade, Alachua has it, Palm Beach County has it, and a couple of other cities. Um, and they have the similar host relationship with the Legal Aid in their, in their counties. Um, so it seems like a great partnership and an opportunity. So the situation right now is that Legal Aid is, their executive board is interested in this discussion and a potential partnership. They have communicated to me and to staff that they, um, you know, I don't want to ask them to do a lot more work if we're not interested at all, um, in moving forward. So I, today would not be, um, any commitment and even it coming before us, that's sort of when we would decide, I'm not trying to, um, commit us to anything. And Legal Aid is not committing to anything either, but they do want to hear from us whether we want, um, to consider an item coming back with details of what this would look like if we decided to move forward. So, um, as I, I don't want to speak for Mr. Doolin. I don't know if he's here. The, um, you know, I was on with, with Ms. Barber and Mr. Doolin and Anna, who I think is here, and this was something they were supportive of. You know, obviously, we've been working with them. Um, and they seemed to indicate that what they were seeing from Legal Aid in Tallahassee was consistent with what they were seeing in other communities. And as far as I can tell, correct me if I'm wrong, they were comfortable with, um, me relaying this message in case we did want to move forward. So I don't know if I need a motion to bring an item back. Okay, so then I would make a motion to, um, bring an item back, to direct staff to work with Legal Aid to come, to bring an item back with some options for what a community ID program could look. with some options for what a community ID program could look like in Tallahassee.
Second. Then probably move by Commissioner Porter, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox.
Just a quick question. Would there be a time limit? I mean, would you expect that to come back at the next commission meeting? Or at whatever point they felt like they had something that...
I would like to see it come back sooner rather than later. Does, is there any objection?
Two weeks, you think that's...
Yeah, I mean, if it's ready to come back, I think that they have done a lot of work on it in the meantime. And so if they feel ready to bring it back at our next meeting, I would love that.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask, I want to ask you a question. With Legal Aid being the host for that, that this would not count as a government-sponsored ID then, would it?
No.
Okay, are we trying to also help with that issue?
So, yeah, so they do already work with residents to get state IDs that are government-issued IDs, obviously. And they would do this in tandem. So if there's someone who, in the meantime, you know, they could get this temporary, this community ID, if they qualify for a state ID, then they will help them through that process. Obviously, that's the ideal, is for everyone to have a state ID.
Any other questions? Questions on table made by Commissioner Porter, seconded by Commissioner Williams-Cox. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Commissioner Porter.
Thank you. So along with the discussion we had earlier today about the Landlord Risk Mitigation Fund, this was something that I brought up to our city manager in our briefing yesterday. I was wondering, there is such a thing as deposit assistance for renters. We've got a lot of good programs that we offer as a city to first-time homebuyers or to homeowners. I've been reading about deposit assistance programs that are either sometimes offered by the private sector, the nonprofit sector, or sometimes local governments. And what this does is there's a lot of people who can afford their rent. What they cannot afford is first, last month and deposit. You know, you take what might be $800 for your rent and now you need like, you know, a couple thousand dollars to pay for all of that. So I was wondering if y'all would be interested, as I would be, in having staff look into what programs exist at different cities to see if there is any way that it's something that we might want to consider. So this would be an information-only thing. I know that affordable housing is a priority of ours and this would just be another tool that I'd like to see if it's worth us pursuing because I think it could really make a difference. I remember graduating from college and I needed to borrow money from my parents to get my first and last month's rent and deposit. I could afford it getting a job, but I couldn't afford it all upfront. And I think this is worth exploring to see if it would help renters in our area.
On point. Mr. Manager.
Yeah, Commissioner, we talked the other day and mayor commissioners. My initial reaction was we didn't have a program that you were describing. I talked to Abena today about it and she reminded me that we have the rapid rehousing portion that does exactly what you're describing for a portion of our citizens, those that are potentially going to be homeless. We could kind of outline that right now at the moment, just take a couple minutes. It gives some background or we can bring back an agenda item of exactly what we do. I think it does get at a little bit what you're talking about. Maybe it doesn't address all the needs that you may have in mind, but we do have the program and thankfully, Abena reminded me of it in terms of the rapid rehousing for those households that are, otherwise would be homeless. So to the extent there's some barriers to entry, they can't get an apartment, they can't get somewhere to live, they qualify, it goes through our social services network and they qualify them. And so we do have that element of it. And if we want to bring an agenda item back, we're happy to do so. If you want us to share some comments, right now we can do that as well.
Okay, I'm happy to hear that. I would probably prefer just an item come back with an overview of that program and maybe some additional details for similar programs. I think we're all pretty spent right now.
Second.
I don't want to open that back up. But I appreciate, thank you for looking into that. Okay, so I've made that motion.
There's a motion on table bringing an information item back in regards to housing assistance program. And I think that Commissioner Porter, they have captured the direction that you're going a lot better than I have. Seconded by Mayor Pro Tim. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed.
And Abena was all tuned up to do it right.
And then I just have a couple of questions related to the public, some of the public comment that was given about the utility assistance. Are we able to publish the resources from our Florida or any other resources that are out there? I mean, is there an FAQ page? Can we create one that's just like a one-stop shop for people that is, you know, that are going to pay their utility bill and they can see all of that?
Mr. Mayor, I've got James Barnes on WebEx and it'd probably be helpful for him to kind of highlight what we do, how we communicate that resource or other resources. James, yeah, I can see James. If you don't mind, let me allow James to answer that.
Okay, thank you.
Most certainly. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners and City Manager and appointed officials. We are at the tail end of what I would consider our support, but it never stops. This week alone, we've had 8,000 phone calls. We've done approximately 2,600 pay plans and extensions and still working with the county and other organizations for aid. But I think one of the speakers earlier referenced one specific case where there was apparently some stress with the person that come up with the deposit. And when we handle that many folks, every now and then, we don't actually execute it the way it should. I would still ask for the citizen to reach out to us so that we can always correct them. But yes, we are still posting to the website, creating information and messages out. But I am not seeing a great deal of, what I should say, latent issues of folks not being able to have access from some of the community partners as well as some of the funding out there. As a matter of fact, we are still going out every Friday with Second Harvest Neighborhood Empowerment in the communities. And they go to community by community every weekend. And we have folks there that are helping with energy orders and also payment plans and payment assistance. But to answer your question, the resources are out there and we can provide much information on our website. We just created a new feature on the utility websites. So if a person goes to the utility page and they're staying there over 30 seconds, you would get an icon that will enter you into a chat. And that happens so that they can get assistance from our representative chatting with them. We only do that from eight to five right now because of available resources. But that's a long answer, Commissioner, but absolutely, we can most certainly post information on the website additional.
Okay, thank you. And can you tell me a little bit more about this grace period and just clarify that? I don't know if you were here when the public comment was made about a grace period.
Extending it from 30 days.
Extending it from 18 to 30 days.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not certain of the particulars and I hate to talk about without having specifics. I can say this, that out of the Florida municipal electric utilities, the 33 of them in the state, our timeframe from when you don't pay to when you're turned off or suspended is one of the longest in the state. That's generally about 45 minutes, 45 days, I'm sorry. So the 18-day grace period, that's a subset of a bigger picture, which is approximately 45 to 50 days before you are suspended for service. That's when you don't reach out and communicate with us because individuals most certainly can do that. As a matter of fact, as I look behind me now, I got 12 folks sitting available waiting for phone calls. So anytime someone wants to proactively talk with us about hardships, we're here seven days a week and most certainly we'll be willing to help them.
Thank you. So can you, I'm just a little confused. So can you explain what triggers the 18 days?
Again, I can't talk about the triggers for 18 days because there are a lot of specific circumstances. It could have been a return check that they were dealing with. And I can say this, that it is approximately 45 days, if you do not pay us, where you will be suspended for non-payment.
Okay, okay.
But there are particular circumstances that I can't get into. There are too many variables.
Okay, I would appreciate, if you can, if there was any way you could look into that? Because I just want to know where that 18 days is coming from so that I just, because I'm a little confused. But I understand what you're saying, but is there any way you could look into that a little bit more and maybe send us an email about it?
I sure can if Ms. Green would just reach out to us with the specifics so that I could respond specifically. And as always, she has my information as well as my team and we are gladly work with them real time when the situation happens so we don't have to wait to get a response and help a citizen.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you so much. I've seen the correspondence, the back and forth, all the effort your team is putting in and I really appreciate it.
You're quite welcome. We are here to serve. That's what we're here for.
Thank you, that's all for me.
Great. Seeing nothing else come before the city commission tonight, we stand adjourned.